I know, I don't know why it's doing. You're gonna see my family's ridiculous every. Yeah, it's just a touchscreen. I mean, I don't care, it's just annoying. And this little keyboard should work if you need it. Okay, whatever, if it's bothering you. Oh, I could probably change the notifications. Hold on, give me just one minute. There should be no more notifications, hopefully. If there are, tell me what's going on with my family at the end of the, at the end. Okay. Okay, can I start the script? Okay. Good afternoon, this open meeting of the Board of Appeals is being conducted hybrid pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Appeals is convening in person and by Zoom app as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care, not to screen share your computer. All supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. So, this is the Town in Nantucket Zoning Board of Appeals regular monthly meeting. Today is February 13, 2025, and we'll open the meeting at 1:04. Would someone make a motion to approve the agenda as drafted?
So moved.
Okay, so John has made that motion and Alisa has seconded it. I'm gonna do roll call because we have two members on Zoom.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt. We did, prior to the meeting, we agreed to move.
Oh, you're right.
Item number 1224 to the top.
Okay. So, motion to approve the agenda as amended, moving the matter that Billy just mentioned to the first spot.
So moved.
Alright, so John makes the motion, Alisa seconds. I'm gonna do roll call vote, I'm just gonna start with the two on Zoom so that we can use that as attendance as well, so Jim.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Okay. John.
Aye.
Alisa.
Aye.
And myself, aye, okay, so the agenda is approved. Are there any?
Don't I get an aye?
Well, no, I only needed five. You can say aye if you'd like. You want to? Okay. Yeah, you can say nay. So for public comment, this is for items not listed on the agenda. If there's anyone in the audience or on Zoom who has a comment about a matter for public concern or for board concern that is not to be considered today on the agenda or they think will not be discussed, this is the time to voice your thoughts. Seeing nobody, is there anyone on Zoom for public comment? No, okay. Okay, so next we're gonna move to approval of the minutes for December 12th and January 9th. Okay. That was December, I think. Do you wanna go get them?
No.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yep.
I'm having trouble hearing Lisa, is your mic on?
Sorry, yeah, no, now it's on, I'm sorry, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
It was for extra ground cover, the building that was moving on.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna make a quick announcement.
Sure.
Diane, I see your hand up, but I don't believe you wanna speak on this first matter, so I'm gonna lower your hand for now.
Yeah, it was December. 21 Wigwam, 3224. Oh no, that's right, I'm sorry. I am a nay on that, okay, I must have read the wrong one. So I don't think I have any comments then.
Okay, so is that a motion to approve? Okay. I do?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so Alisa makes the motion and John seconds. I'm just gonna go roll call the five members sitting at the table, so Alisa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
And myself, aye, okay, so the minutes are approved. So. Oh, sorry. Okay, so we are going to go a little bit out of order, we're gonna hear a new business matter first. 12-24 South Sconset Neighborhood Association LLC, 1 Magnolia Avenue, 10 Grand Avenue, et cetera. Presenting is Stephen Cohen, I think, right, is Cohen presenting? And Steve, you have the floor.
Hi, sorry about that, I was unmuted, had a little trouble unmuting it. Okay, my name is Stephen Cohen, I represent the applicant here. And what we have going on is that the Summer House at both of its locations, the Bistro on the beach and the hotel and restaurant, has significant zoning issues, which are, you know, laid out in detail in the appeal that I filed and we appealed from the building commissioner's decision. But today, I don't wanna get into those details because we have been working with the owner of the property and it's been a little slow going. She's had some personal family issues that we've been accommodating. But I think we have very successfully worked out a way for her to apply to the planning board for an MCD to deal with the fact that she has expanded her uses and triggered an MCD and that she has zoning issues that could be cleaned up in an MCD. And we basically are ready to file that immediately for the next filing deadline. And if that happens and works out, then we don't need to go through the zoning process at all and we would withdraw. If the, for some reason, the MCD didn't work out, then we would go forward, so we wanna keep the appeal pending. We don't see that as likely, but we wanna preserve our rights. So what we're asking the board for and what the defendant has agreed to is a three-month continuance to let us get to the planning board and see what's going on over there. And again, hopefully, the goal would be to have an MCD issued that would clean up all of these zoning issues and also address all the concerns that the neighbors have. So that's what we're asking for, a three-month continuance, so that we can go to the planning board. Thank you.
And were we able to confirm that from De Benedictus that she's agreed with to this?
Yeah, her attorney is also online.
Perfect, so I guess if we could just hear from her attorney.
Thank you.
Deliberate, that'd be great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have been working in Attorney Cohen's absence with Attorney Bell and Glenn Wood and Tyler Franklin as the team who represents the association. I've been working with them on behalf of Danielle De Benedictus to arrange an agreement where we agree to disagree as to whether or not the MCD process is required in this instance. But nevertheless, have my client voluntarily apply for that without waiving either party's rights as to whether it's needed. And in this way, the neighborhood and Ms. De Benedictus can reach agreement on operations at the Summer House and at the Beachside Bistro. They'll be detailed in that MCD permit application. Number of conditions we've been negotiating will resolve a lot of the concerns of the association and the hope is that the planning board will approve it. And as Mr. Cohen said, the application, or this appeal application in front of the zoning board could be withdrawn at that time, assuming the planning board approves the permit with the conditions we've negotiated. So in that manner, hoping to bring closure and resolution to this matter without either having to go in front of the ZBA or having any attendant litigation that might follow. The only thing I wanted to correct with Mr. Cohen's timeline is I'm not sure when your next filing deadline is, so I don't wanna be too aggressive with that. We are very close to having signatures on the document that we think we can start circulating next week, but there are a lot of parties involved. So with regard to when your next deadline is, I think the three months is certainly sufficient time. We will have filed and hopefully held our first hearing by then. But I just don't wanna promise that we will have the MCD application filed by the planning board's next filing deadline, as I don't know when that is. Otherwise, I agree with Mr. Cohen's assessment. Thank you for your time today.
Okay, thank you. So we could certainly entertain a three-month continuance and then obviously if it's before the planning board and we need to revisit that, we can. How are we on action deadlines, do we need an extension by either?
We will need an ex, currently, the action deadline is March 31st, so and just to confirm, I think we're talking about extending to May 31st?
Yeah.
So I would just need the applicant to, or yeah, I would need the applicant to sign the extension, which I don't think will be an issue. And.
So Stephen, can we get your agreement that you will sign an extension for the action deadline?
Yeah, absolutely, Billy can just email it to me, no problem.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I just wanted to make one other comment that I just got sidetracked. The last planning board deadline was on Monday, so for the April meeting, I don't know off the top of my head, but the deadline will be like the second week of March, second Monday in March.
Thank you, that might be doable?
So, do we wanna do an extension till, like if they're, so you're saying it'll get heard in April?
Correct. So I think May 31st is a good starting point.
At least to get an update and then we can move from there, okay.
Shouldn't we do an extra month or so, because it's probably not gonna get approved.
No, but at least we'll have, I guess, I think what you're saying, Billy and John, what you're echoing is we'll have, even if we have to get an update that whether the planning board is gonna take that on as an MCD or they're gonna say it's not an MCD, and if they say not, then it comes back to us. So, we'll know, we'll know something. Okay, I mean, I, anyone have any objections to that request by the parties? Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so.
I'll second it.
Lisa makes the motion, Alisa seconds. I'll have the five at the table vote again, so Lisa.
Aye.
Alisa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, so that request for a continuance till May 31st is granted and Stephen, Billy will get you your office, the action deadline extension for you to sign.
Hey, thank you very much and I really appreciate you accommodating my schedule, thank you.
Yeah, no worries, thank you.
Thanks very much.
So we're gonna, yep, thank you so much. We're going to bounce back to old business. And this is 24-0008 Stephen J. and Holly J. Visco, 59 South Shore Road. This was continued. Do we? Guess we will start with the applicant, if their representative has anything new to add. You wanna, you're gonna recuse, okay, so John is recusing, so.
Billy, can you mute me?
Sorry. I'm moving you back over, Stephen.
Thank you.
Okay, so who, did we set a board on this one last time? I can't remember.
We did, and I'm sorry if it didn't make it into the packet.
No, that's okay.
It is Susan, Alisa, Lisa, Joe and Jim.
Joe and Jim. Joe, Jim. Jim twice. Okay. So I guess we would hear from the applicant first and then we will hear from the homeowner second, if the applicant has anything new to add at this time.
Yes, if you would, Madam Chairman.
Sure.
For the record, Dan Bailey, land use attorney from Pierce Atwood in Boston, representing the applicants Holly and Stephen Visco at 2 Zachary Way. With me is my colleague Kathleen Hiner. As noted, this is an appeal of the building inspector's determination that certain activities and uses at 59 South Shore Road are allowed under the zoning bylaw. As the board knows, at the last hearing, made a thorough presentation regarding commercial uses being conducted at 59 South Shore Road. All of those materials are in your packet and we're not gonna repeat that presentation, but we do wanna focus on a few follow-up items. First, we wanna present the marketing materials that are being used for the property because they, we think they're a real indication of the intent for what that property is gonna be used. Then we want to talk about some police reports that we picked up regarding parking situation and noise complaints. And finally, just to respond to some comments that have been raised. We also wanna make very clear, there's been a lot of commentary about how my clients and others are objecting to the activities at 59 South Shore Road because of their objections to surfside crossing. Nothing could be further from the truth. While my clients have admitted and are on the record as not being fans of surfside crossing in the past, like many Nantucket residents, here, the issue is, has nothing to do with surfside crossing. It's not personal, as has been alleged. It's entirely the impacts of the activities at 59 South Shore Road on the Visco's property, nearby property. And those impacts are the large and disruptive events that are occurring at 59 South Shore Road. So, anyway, as we stated at the last hearing, the activities that my clients are complaining of, certain weddings, retreats, fundraisers and other events, are commercial activities that are not permitted in a residential district. I wanna be clear, our objection is not to short-term residential rentals. Those are not an issue as so long as the use is residential. Our issue is the property is being marketed and used by renters to hold events like the 300-person wedding that we discussed at the last hearing. We think the best way to demonstrate how the property is being marketed is to show you the marketing materials. So what we have is the video that is readily available if anybody were to Google 59 South Shore Road in Nantucket. And we're not gonna play it all, but we're gonna play a part of it just so we can demonstrate how the property is being marketed as an event space. Kathleen, can you take care of that?
Got it. Welcome to Harbor Site 59, an oasis of tranquility nestled on the picturesque island of Nantucket within earshot of the mesmerizing ocean waves. This exquisite property seamlessly adjoins vast conservation lands, granting you immediate access to rejuvenating nature walks that commence right from your doorstep with an array of trail networks extending in all directions. Prepare to immerse yourself in a slice of heaven where serenity meets luxury at every turn. Step inside and experience a lifestyle of unparalleled opulence. Indulge in the lavish dining and living quarters where every detail has been meticulously crafted to offer the utmost comfort and elegance. The entertainment room beckons with its full live band setup, complete with a bar and a professionally equipped catering kitchen, providing for any culinary desire while seamlessly accommodating any special event you may have in mind. Prepare to relax in a private primary bedroom, an inviting sanctuary boasting a spacious layout, an en suite bathroom with luxurious amenities and a private outdoor balcony overlooking a picturesque courtyard. Additional accommodations include eight bedrooms, ranging from king suites to twin-over-queen bunk beds. The combined nine bedrooms will effortlessly accommodate over 20 guests. To venture outside, you'll discover a haven of relaxation and entertainment, complete with a pool and spa. The octangular timber-framed pool house invites you to bask in the sun while the outdoor sitting areas offer perfect settings for intimate gatherings. And don't forget the three thoughtfully spaced fire pits where you can cozy up under the starlit sky, sharing stories and creating memories that will last a lifetime. The courtyard, embraced by the expanse of residence, features a vast grass parking court and a riding rink, both capable of transforming into enchanting tented spaces or entertaining realms for activities like croquet, bocce ball, yoga and a myriad of other outdoor pursuits limited solely by your imagination. Nestled between the pool area and the back paddock regions lies a bountiful orchard adorned with 36 fruit trees. Beyond the confines of this luxurious sanctuary, Nantucket awaits, ready to captivate you with its endless adventures. Explore pristine beaches, go sailing on the azure waters or embark on a scenic bike ride through the island's charming streets. And when night falls, prepare to be awe-inspired by local entertainment and fine dining experiences. For the discerning equestrian owner, Harbor Site 59 offers exceptional accommodations from.
So, if I jump back in there, there's a little bit more to it, but, you know, I don't wanna belabor it. The point of playing this is to show to the board, you know, that this property is very much set up for events and it's being marketed for events. It is a fully wired band setup, a full catering kitchen, and the marketing materials say it's available for any event that you may have in mind. Also, as noted in our letter to the board, the marketing materials contemplate an expansion, which according to those materials will be the stable and equestrian facility, the picture of which we see right now. We're not here to debate, get into the debate about whether a stable and equestrian facility is a commercial or accessory to residential use. I'm gonna argue that it's certainly not accessory to a single-family residential use in this context. But the point being that Mr. Feeley owns the abutting property of 14 Tripp Drive. He has obtained HDC approval for construction of what has been described as a carriage house on that property. He's granted an easement to 59 South Shore Drive over that property from South Shore Road. The point being that, and this was some of the concerns expressed last time, and certainly a concern of my clients, is, you know, we've seen commercial activities already at this property and there seems to be an indication that those are going to be expanded in the future in the context of an equestrian facility. I've also included in the package that I sent police logs noting noise complaints at the property. There are complaints from May and October of 2024, in addition to the large wedding in September. We also wanted to note that contrary to representations made at the last hearing, that the security team for that large wedding in September shut down the music at 10, that in fact, the music was only shut down after several complaints were made to the police and the police stepped in and took steps to shut down the music. Mr. Feeley and his representatives are trying to make the case that the events at the property are accessory to a single-family residential use. This board is probably more familiar with the definition of accessory use than any other provision in the zoning bylaw right now. They are uses that are subordinate, customary and incidental. Taking all of the information together, the marketing materials, the prior events, the activities, the open floor, first floor layout of the house, the yard conducive to large gatherings. This is not customary and incidental to a single-family residential use. This use is far different from the basic short-term renting of a house that the board has previously authorized. The board should not permit this commercial use in a residential zoning district. It is highly disruptive to the neighborhood, as the board heard at its prior meeting. If it can be conducted in this residential neighborhood, it can be conducted in any residential neighborhood on Nantucket. Finally, I just wanna touch briefly on some of the letters of support that came in from Mr. Feeley. There are four, five, six letters or so. I'll note that many of these, maybe the bulk of these, are from former renters, former customers of Mr. Feeley as well as the one from, and a butter is from a vendor who operated the transportation. He was a transportation vendor for the wedding that was held there last September. So they're not coming from disinterest parties and there's no one of the actual neighbors who is coming in and supporting this. Instead, there are additional letters from the neighbors expressing their concerns about it. Just in summary, you know, as always, we appreciate the time and the effort that the board expends in considering these matters. We recognize that the analysis of what constitutes a permissible accessory use requires a fact-intensive analysis and there's no bright line. We believe that there is no question here, however, that the use of the property for commercial events, such as the ones discussed before the board, is so far beyond any subordinate and customarily incidental use that the board should find that they constitute an unauthorized use and direct Mr. Feeley to refrain from using his property for such use. I am happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Bailey. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this? Do we wanna hear from the homeowner at this point?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Rick Bodett for the homeowners, Liz and Jamie Feeley. I think Mr. Feeley wants to speak for a couple of minutes and then if it's okay, I'll speak after him.
Sure, yep, that works.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board, Jamie Feeley for the record. Before I get into some of these prepared comments that I put together, I just wanna quickly comment on Mr. Bailey's video that he shared this morning. So that was created as part of our early thinking two years ago. What he didn't show you at the end of that video, there's a website that says Harbor Site 59. It was a name we were contemplating way back when. One of our veteran friends actually suggested it, we never ended up naming the site of the property, Harbor Site 59. And at the end of the video, it says harbersite59.com. It's a website that we never set up. And so, you know, the fact that I think. And so, you know, the fact that I think that we just recently learned yesterday as, as part of reading Attorney Bailey's letter, that there is a single realtor that has posted this, this video, it's not, this video was, you know, and I'm not saying there's anything wrong with the video, but, you know, we're, we're still a long ways from getting horses on the property and doing things that are in that video. So he didn't give you a complete representation of it. And, and it's, it's not actively being used with, with one exception, which I wasn't even aware of until today. So anyway, with that, I've given a lot of thought to what I wanted to say today in the wake of last month's meeting. And thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me and my attorney, Rick Bodett, some time to address the myriad of assertions. I want to start by taking a moment to thank all of the folks who have reached out to us after reading about in the press last month about the, the past hearing. The outpouring of heartfelt support from those who know us, friends and neighbors alike, and who understand the truth of it all was incredible for Liz and me. Hopefully, the board has had a chance to, to, to read through many of the letters that were sent, including direct abutters, knowing most of them came in after the pack was posted. And I will just take a moment again to address Attorney Bailey. The, the letters of support that I've read, that, that however, it is, half a dozen, none of them are from renters. These are from, I think there's three veterans, combat vets, that have been part of retreats that have been to our home as guests, as part of the many retreats that we've hosted. Not, not, there's no rent, there's no exchange of money. This is, this is us doing what is, we're passionate about. And that's part of our intention for that home. So anyway, I just want to clarify that, that point. I'd like to start with a brief history of how my family and I came to the decision to make fifty nine South Shore Road our home. My wife and I bought a home on Evergreen twenty plus years ago. It was a small two bedroom house that we loved. We raised our family there for fifteen years, finishing the basement out of third bedroom as our family grew. Along the way, we had many opportunities to move into more spacious homes, but we never wanted this. We loved our little gem. In twenty twenty, I put fifty nine South Shore Road under contract. I thought the property had great potential, and given the rich history of equine activity in the neighborhood, and the lots spacious five acres that abuts conservation land, and that it's situated at the end of a dead end street, could be great. I was thinking around those lines when a realtor called me and asked if I had seen the timber frame structures that were slated for demo over on the cliff, and they were being offered for salvage. I went and looked at the green barn, as it was known, and was inspired by the possibilities. I went home that night and shared the opportunity with my family at the dinner table and said, if it's unanimous, we can sell our residential holdings here on Evergreen and another home we owned in Totochamo and make this our new home. This decision was prefaced with my family on a few qualifying elements that we all needed to agree to. One, we would agree to rent it for a portion of the high season while we traveled. We're closing in on visiting all fifty states as a family. So that worked and was agreed to. Two, this would allow us to be more sociable from a hosting standpoint, given the, the small, very humble home that we had come from, and to be more active with our not for profit interests and passions. Number three, my wife Liz, who is a licensed social worker and has served this community as a counselor at Fairwins and later as the, as the school counselor for the new school, was interested in returning to private practice. And this move would allow her a nice space for that new chapter of her career. As aside to that, our interest in horses is very much rooted in my work with the vets and first responders and Liz's counseling, as, as, as has always been a part of our vision for this property. In fact, the area used for the tent in the big wedding is a fenced in pasture, which we intend to be for horses to graze going forward, not for big tented events. So we made the decision unanimously as a family to relocate from Evergreen to South Shore Road and for our next chapter. We ended up moving the two timber frame buildings right at the outset of COVID, and it was very much a design build. We permitted what was known as the green barn to be our main house, main home, and a small portion of what was known as the red barn to be our guest home. We actually deconstructed both of them, moved them across town and re-erected them on our property, two separate permits. Part of our deal with the donor of these buildings was that we would take all the landscaping material, all the hardscaping material from the site, which was saved, which would save him demolition fees. It ended up being a godsend for us because while the world supply chain shut down during COVID, we were able to utilize a tremendous amount of salvaged, salvaged materials in our design build process. But of note, it wasn't until halfway through the project that one of my guys suggested to me, why don't you connect the two buildings underground? I thought about it and decided, why not just connect the two buildings, period? So we changed the permits from two dwellings to one, and that's how we ended up with two kitchens and a fun room. Since moving in with my family in June of twenty twenty three, we've been able to host family, friends, and host various events, always in alignment with our intentions and passions. We have also rented the property so far, only five weeks. What you haven't heard is what we have passed on, many rental opportunities, far more than we have accepted. This is for various case by case reasons. But we have never rented the home for an event per se. It's always been for a one week rental. All five times. Our, our ideal renter is a family, large or small, who wants to hunker down and perhaps even utilize a private chef for beautifully intimate gatherings, as has been the case so far. Yes, there was the one big exception, the big wedding, which we have said again and again, was a learning experience where we rented directly to a friend of a friend, didn't come from a realtor, didn't come from an advertise, ad. And this is not our intended use going forward. We keep saying this. So a couple of quick examples, we rent, we, we recently passed on a two week rental this, this spring, this coming spring, that would have hosted a larger scale wedding. We turned it down. That would have been great income. We were approached by a well respected member of our community back in August last year, last summer, about potentially renting our home for a party this past fall. To respect their privacy, I'll keep their name anonymous, but the text, my text response was, and I quote, "I'm dropping my daughter off at boarding school this morning and will be driving home this afternoon. Are you available to talk to me then? In the meantime, just a heads up, we don't think of our home as a party house. We do not rent it by the, we, we do rent it by the week in season, and we have hosted some charitable events, but are not interested in renting the place out for parties. It's not how we want to impact the home or the neighborhood. That said, I do welcome a conversation with you and I'm interested in helping. Let me know if you have a good window or two this afternoon," end quote. After further communication, they took their search elsewhere. Okay, that was in August, before any of this. So yes, we want to retain our rights and not be treated differently than any other property owner on the island. We absolutely want to continue to support causes we are aligned with, to gather with friends and family, and to connect with the right tenants who we, who we will offer our home to for rent. That said, I now want to go back to the being treated differently part. And I implore you, the board, not to get baited into an arbitrary and in some instances malicious effort to target our home as part of other agendas. I just want to take a bit more time to go through what is really at play here in several instances, and has nothing to do with Paul's finding that we have not used the property in a commercial manner. Actually, I think the point has been well established already. One big wedding, which is really the central focus here, does not render the use of our home commercial. In Paul's words, it's not even close. And in my words, I've already said again and again, this, this was a learning experience. It's, it's one event. We've been at the house for two and a half years, living with my family. So what is this about? You know, I don't know, Holly Visco. I've met Steve before. I've had one direct exchange with Holly, two years ago in February. She wrote me an email dated February twenty second, twenty twenty three. And it read, "Hi, Jamie. Can you tell me anything about the schedule for Surfside Crossing? Will it be built in phases? To be honest, I find the whole thing kind of scary, and I was hoping that you could tell me something that might make me look at it in a more positive light. As you know, from traveling down the road this week, the sewer connection work is a necessary nuisance, but a nuisance nonetheless. And I'm really hoping that Surfside Crossing is an albatross to the neighborhood that I'm dreading it will be. Believe me, we understand the necessity for affordable housing, and Saichem's path and Abrams Quarry have worked out well. But throw in Sherburne Commons and Teen Center and the sewer treatment plan, it's starting to feel like a foot that's too big for the shoe. Anything you feel like sharing would be appreciated. I must admit, it's keeping me up at night. Holly Visco." So I responded the same day. "Hi, Holly. Thanks for the note and candor. I'm happy to discuss our plans over coffee with you and hope that it will be helpful. Are you around over the weekend?" She responded, "Hi, Jamie. I thought over, I thought it over, and there's probably no reason to meet and waste your time. I guess it just is what it is. I'm hopeful that you and Josh do the right thing, however. See the scope of the project as way too dense and do less. Even the plan that the Z B A ultimately got their heads around seemed too much, seemed so much better than what's now proposed. In any event, no hard personal feelings, but I'll say I'm super disappointed in what's happening to our neighborhood, not to mention the island in general. Sad, but happy Friday at least, Holly." And so it was a very cordial exchange, and I have no animus toward, toward the Viscos or any of my neighbors at all. And, and to the degree that there is some discomfort around, you know, the project that I'm doing down the road or about my, my involvement in fourteen Trip, which for the record, okay, let's be very clear. There's the fourteen Trip and fifty nine South Shore are different owners. Liz and I own fifty nine South Shore. Fourteen Trip is owned with an entity, and I have an ownership stake in it. But it's, it's, it's completely different ownership control than fifty nine South Shore Road. Okay, and so to, to align interests in a neighborhood, especially when you know you're thinking along terms of, of equine, I, I think that's perfectly appropriate. We're, fourteen Trip Drive is not part of this discussion. It certainly should not be, okay, because it's, it's unrelated as far as ownership. At the last meeting, Sarah Eldred came up here and, and had some, some words and, and suggested that she just, it was happenstance. Well, she represented Holly, who is her legal, paralegal, as I understand it, and, and represented Holly and Steve when I had fourteen Trip under agreement before I closed. But they were opposing a subdivision of that property that I was working on with the sellers, and they were well aware of who, who it involved. So there was a process there, and there's a history there. And I think there's a fear there of what's to come, and I hope at the end of the day that they are happily surprised by, by what happens there. So, so that's part of it. I've been, I've been contacted by the lawyers of the striings as it relates to fourteen Trip Drive. And I think it was disingenuous by, by Sarah to say that, you know, it was happenstance. And and I just want to note that I've been, I've been, I've been contacted by another attorney on that road as it relates to fourteen Trip Drive. So there is an active issue separate from fifty nine. And there's a history with, with Surfside Crossing. I don't want to get into too much of some of the other stuff or potentially the hypocrisies. I'm really hesitant to do that. There is an article being proposed for Rachel Drive that proposes changing the zoning, which has already gone from lug two to lug one to V R. And I know, you know, Holly has signed it, Don Visco and Phyllis Visco, to change it to half acre zoning. And so if you're really concerned about the traffic down there, you know, if, if that same zoning was applied to my property, there'd be over ten potential short term rental lots, you know, fifty nine, that they're proposing two streets down, the same people that are complaining about one wedding. That, in her own words, wasn't really that big of a deal. It's the future use or potential use that they're talking about here. So anyway, with that, I just hope that you guys won't treat me differently than the whole rest of the island. Last time I was up here, there was some talk about your homes and the size of your homes and what your homes could fit for, for a gathering or fundraiser. There's a few, few of the board members that, that suggested that, and it's at what point, like, what is the, the right size? What's the right size home or property that, that's going to be the gold standard for the whole rest of the homeowners on the island relative to what's, what's allowed once a year, or in this instance, once every two and a half years, maybe once every five years? It's only happened one time where we, where we've had anything over like a hundred people. And we do have five acres, and it is a, a, a vast property that we, we've designed so that we can utilize it to hold various retreats and, and, and fun things that, that, that feel good to us, that are not renting for events or in any commercial way at all. I would, I would suggest it's very, it's on the opposite end of the, the commercial spectrum.
Thank you. You have a question, Alisa?
Yes, I, I have heard that you do generous events for vets and soldiers and disabled soldiers, and I think it's awesome, and I don't think anybody condemns you for that. I don't know that there's any mention of any equine situation, anybody with a problem with the horses. I think there are more horses on that road and in that area, so I don't, I don't know that that's part of this application. I, this is the first I'm hearing about a problem with any horses. But how are you, you said it's a learning experience. So I kind of want to know what you mean by that, and how are you going to keep the peace with your neighbors and keep them from worrying that you're going to do this scale of a wedding, which we can't deny that there was a wedding venue shown and it being promoted on that video in, in a way that makes it feel like it's available for wedding parties and large scale events. What do you want to do so that you get along with your neighbors, so they don't dislike you, so they trust you, so they don't call the police and complain about you? I know you went around and bought them, bought certain people, correct me if I'm wrong, gift certificates to go to dinner for the night of this big Jay-Z Beyonce wedding, just to kind of say, "I apologize in advance," and I don't know if that's true or not. I think you mentioned that. So what do you want to do to make these people that you have to drive by every single day and the community feel better about you not hosting these huge events?
Well, let me just start by saying, first of all, their feelings toward me, in many instances, preceded my ownership of this property. Okay, and goes far beyond how I utilize the property. I can share some stories with you that I'm not going to.
I want to talk about here forward.
I know, but what I am telling you, and it was in one of the letters from one of the direct abutters, that his intention is to, going forward, is to call the police any chance he gets.
Well, what are you going to do to prevent that?
I, I, I have rights as a property owner.
Right, but you don't have the rights to have a commercial property that has big weddings. Right, but you don't have the rights to have a commercial property that has big weddings. You don't. And by the fact that you charged money for that week and you received money, in my opinion, constitutes it as a commercial use. You took it too far, you know, you one toked over the line and now everybody's mad.
So can I just, before you guys get into back and forth, I think what I heard, I was feeling very encouraged by where you started because it seemed to me that you were giving Mr. Feely an opportunity to, where he has said that he and his family saw this as a learning opportunity and your original question was, going forward, what have you learned from that and how do you plan to move forward with the knowledge that you got from that learning experience?
Thank you. I mean, I've said this before and I'm happy to reiterate it because we were approached by a friend, a good friend of ours, brought the gentleman, the groom-to-be, to our home and introduced him to us and talked about, you know, that they were getting married over a year from that time on Nantucket and this would be a great opportunity. And so that gentleman came back with his wife, met with Liz and me, walked the property with us. You know, I don't want to get too personal with the circumstances because I want to protect their privacy, but you know, we really connected with them and thought, all right, let's do this. We didn't know the guest list, like we don't have any say over the guest list. It wasn't Jay-Z and Beyonce's wedding, they were guests at this wedding. And so, but I had no idea, you know, what the tent was really going to look like. I just knew it was going to be a big wedding. And so that's what I mean when it's a live and learn.
I get it.
It's like sometimes you can do something that feels very much in alignment and from the heart and then you realize like, wait.
It wasn't what it was meant to be.
And we were actually, we were actually away that week off island, so I wasn't even able to like, Liz was having a major procedure.
You didn't attend the wedding?
No, we weren't invited to the wedding.
Did you accept money for that week for the wedding?
Of course, we rented the property for the week. Same as we did to families that rented the property for a week.
I hear on the background, but what you're not answering is, what are you going to do for your neighbors that are irritated by this huge event to guarantee them it's not going to happen again?
Well, first of all, there's no, like you're asking me to make a guarantee.
Yeah, well, you said it was a learning experience. I want to know what that means.
I have no interest in doing another wedding like this anytime soon.
That's great. They're going to be thrilled.
So examples would be, I think what you're saying is, something that could maybe be done would be in our lease, in our lease agreement going forward, we would stipulate that, you know, there is no, that the renter, you know, is saying that they don't have plans to have a big wedding while they're renting.
I don't want to be treated different than anybody else on this.
No, I don't think I'm saying that. I'm saying, I would think, like, I would think anyone that rented their house for a week would not be super psyched to find out that they went away for the week and someone erected a tent and had all this.
Had fireworks and had tents.
Right, without permission.
That's explicitly not allowed in a lease.
Exactly, right.
Without a specific addendum. So that would never happen without my knowledge.
But how are you going to guarantee that to your neighbors that you've upset so much that they had to bring this in front of us?
But I think that's the example of what you were looking for, and I'm just trying to play mediator here.
Yeah, no, please do.
Of what you were looking for in terms of something that would be standard going forward.
So we don't have to go through this again?
I trust me, I don't want to go through this again either.
Right, so we're all on the same page, but what are you going to do? I'm sure you and your lawyer figured out a way to.
I've already said it, again and again. We have no intention of doing.
I know what your intention was, but what are you going to do from here forward, Jamie?
I think, and I think you just said it, you said it's explicitly not allowed.
I'm not going to say it again. Can I just talk through you chair for a minute?
Yeah, sure, sure.
So I will say, we had a beautiful, small wedding, smallish wedding at our home for two local teachers and I've been approached by another couple, years ago actually, who were born and raised on Nantucket and they always said, "If we get married, could we do it at your house?" And he texted me this past week and they haven't, you know, they are now engaged, both born and raised in Nantucket, young professionals. And they said, "You know, I know there's all this pressure on you right now and so if we need to pivot and do something differently, we will." And that would be the shame of it, you know, because for us, we were hosting good local people.
Nobody is complaining about the small events, Jamie.
I think you guys are, I think you're.
I'm going to go, I think I said what I need to say. Thank you again.
Well, I just want to add one other thing. I do, Jamie, I think, you know, I agree with Alisa, the letters of the people that, where you've hosted people and vets and also where you've hosted these smaller weddings and you're a part of them. Well, right, that's wonderful. I think the difference, and I agree with Alisa's, is when it has to, and I don't know how to do it because I agree, you should have, I guess, the same rights, everybody should have the same rights in terms of how they use their property, but I think the scale of the wedding is what impacted the neighborhood and somehow that needs to be controlled, not only on your property, on everybody's property because it's just not cool for the neighborhood.
100%, I agree.
So how do we do that in terms of, but unfortunately, you might be the person that we start with.
As long as it's everybody, okay?
I think that's the threshold of fairness in.
Well, there was that one thing on Whalers, not in Tom Nevers, where there was that huge wedding venue.
And we ruled that that was not, we said that was not commercial.
I didn't, I voted against it.
I know, but I'm saying the board, I'm saying the board.
But I, so I have a very different.
Billy's had his hand up for a while, but anyway.
Yeah, I just want to remind the public and the board, for the process, for the minutes, comments need to go through the chair. And then additionally, the matter before you is 59 South Shore. You know, other appeals that have happened, every circumstance is different and has different circumstances surrounding it. So we shouldn't be getting into comparing anything, we should be dealing with the matter that's before the board.
Thank you. So you've been at the mic for a while.
May I just speak because I have to get back?
Yeah, yeah, sure. And then Rick will go over to you.
I just wanted to.
Can you just say your name for the record?
Diane Cabral, C-A-B-R-A-L. I live at 8 South Shore Road and I just wanted to let you know, another impact on the neighborhood for this wedding, which I understand he's going to not do that again supposedly, but for a week, 10 days, trucks coming from 59 down to the Surfside Crossing property and numerous big trucks, they were setting up the staging for the event, which I went down there, it was beautiful. I've never seen anything quite like it, but I mean, that night, there were 40 cars on the side of the road, there were six livery vehicles, numerous security people, they had golf carts crossing the street as busloads of people came down. But my concern was the impact on the neighborhood before and then after with these truckloads of trucks bringing like the equipment for this stage, which was enormous and magnificent. But, I mean, they knocked down my mailbox, but I went out and spoke to them and they were nice and fixed it. But it's just, it's not just that night. I just wanted you to be aware. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Cabral. Attorney Bodett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did submit a letter, my partner did, to Billy this afternoon. I doubt you have a chance to read it, but I do want to hand it out to you.
Oh, that'd be great. I don't think I got it.
I literally, it was not.
Thank you.
I emailed it. I received it just at 1:00, so, or just before then, and I have it pulled up if anyone wants to pull it up or gave out copies.
I don't have it, I'd like to see it.
Billy, can you forward that to Attorney Bailey, please?
Thank you.
Yes, I'm forwarding it right now.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will say at the outset that I'm a, please be patient with me today, I'm a little out of sorts. So I appreciate your patience, just make it a little slower than I did last time.
You're going to have to speak up, Rick, sorry, or just?
I just asked you to be a little patient with me, I'm a little distracted at the moment.
Okay.
Okay.
As I mentioned, Rick Bodett for Liz and Jamie Feely, owners of 59 South Shore Road. Just to refresh your recollection and as Jamie said as well, this is my client's primary residence and as I said last hearing, everything that they have done on this property is an allowed accessory use under your zoning bylaw. And I do want to dispel the myth, I know we spoke about it last time, but there's letters about it, there's emails about it. I do want to dispel the myth here that there's a commercial kitchen, clearly this time, and maybe a little more clearly than I did last time. It's not a commercial kitchen, folks. You need a license to have a commercial kitchen on your property, okay? You have to have a food service license, you have to be a caterer. A caterer on Nantucket has their own commercial kitchen that they cook food in and they bring it to where they're going to cater. This kitchen, a caterer is not allowed to cook anything in this kitchen. Not allowed, because it is not a commercial kitchen. Is it sweet? Yeah. Is it better than most of our kitchens? Absolutely. Can someone cater out of it easily? Yeah. But it's not a commercial kitchen, okay? In fact, I attached in my, as Exhibit A to my letter, an email from Jake Visco, who works for the Health Department, to a caterer who wanted to do work there. And it says about 59 South Shore Road, I quote, "The private residence does not have a permitted commercial kitchen." And he's telling her that she can't cook food there. That's the purpose of his email. The next point I want to make, again, is that this use of the property is not a commercial use, despite the wedding taking place there, despite fundraisers taking place there. Mr. Bailey showed you a video, a marketing material video that shows a beautiful house, talks about the fact that you can have an event there, talks about how sweet the pool is and how great Nantucket is, okay? He also submitted police logs that show people called to complain about loud music just after 5:00 PM. And importantly, there's no noise violation, just noise complaints, again, not long after 5:00 PM. He also submitted an application to the HDC to build a house or carriage house on Trip Drive, which is allowed to be built as a matter of right. And in addition, the video that he showed shows a pasture and a, I'm not done yet, sorry.
No, I didn't say anything.
Okay. A pasture and a stable to be built, which my client does want to build, again, allowed to build it as a matter of right, okay? And so what does Mr. Bailey's letter not say or his presentation not say? It does not in any way indicate where in our zoning bylaw my client has violated it. Nowhere. There's nowhere in our bylaw that doesn't allow this use. And you may feel like the bylaw should regulate this use and that's completely fair and I might even agree, but there's nothing in the bylaw that regulates this use. And as proof that there's nothing in the bylaw that regulates this use, we did a Freedom of Information Act request about 59 South Shore and 14 Trip Drive. And what is apparent from that, in addition to dozens and dozens of emails from Ms. Visco to just about every town department, police department, licensing, plus health, town administration, and a number of internal emails amongst departments, is that everybody agrees on Nantucket that there's nothing prohibiting this, it isn't regulated. And as a result, what did the town do? Exhibit B is an email from Libby to Megan Perry. "A meeting was convened earlier this week with several departments and town officials, including health, police, licensing, plus, to discuss how private events held on private property can be regulated to mitigate nuisance impacts on neighborhoods such as noise and parking. It was determined that it may be possible for the Board of Health to potentially adopt such regulations. The outcome of the meeting was that the Health Department is exploring the option." That was on October 4th. On October 17th, the Board of Health had their regularly scheduled meeting and had this as an agenda item, private events on private property. And I attached the minutes as the last exhibit in my letter. But essentially, the Board of Health declined to regulate this. Malcolm McNabb said he would take it back to the Select Board to talk about. And so, you know, I also want to point out, you'll see Exhibit C and D is an email from Amy Baxter to Ms. Visco. And she says, "Edgar Town recently proposed a limit on large parties in residential neighborhoods." See attached, "And this is something we should start considering. There needs to be limits." And so, and she attaches that and I've attached the Edgar Town regulations, which I don't have to go through all of it, but they define event, they define a guest, they put limits on how many you can have per month, over 50 people, et cetera. And that may be the same, what we do here, it may be worthwhile for this town to do that, but the place to do it is not here, I'm sorry. You are charged with deciding whether Paul was right to not enforce this use on the property and there's nothing in our bylaw preventing my client or me or anyone else from having an event on their property. Your own decisions have stated that short-term rentals are allowed and that someone can short-term rent and have a wedding. That's what your own decisions have said in the past. And so to Jamie's point, shouldn't be treated any differently than anybody else on Nantucket. And so the result of all those meetings is what does the town do? Nothing, okay? They don't, they, this was in October. Mr. and Mrs. Visco certainly could have filed a citizen petition to prevent this, to change the bylaw. They did not, they filed this instead. The town, of course, could have done the same thing and chose not to. So the town has specifically decided not to regulate this. So I don't see how you guys can, in contravention of that. And so the third point I just want to make, folks, is that, and this is based on a lot of the comments at the last meeting, is you can't enforce potential, much as you may want to, you can't. And you can't prevent someone from having potential. So there were multiple comments at the last meeting and I just want to quote a number of them, okay? The applicant, "The wedding wasn't a major concern." End quote. Again, the applicant, quote, "The main concern is potential for the property." Applicant again, "We want some limits in the future." And an email from the applicant that we saw, "The staging wasn't really a problem for the wedding." End quote. The applicant's attorney, "There's no issue with smaller events." That's a quote. Quote, "Short-term rentals are allowed. Ms. Alger, fundraisers are fine." Ms. Bajachelli, "Everyone has fundraisers at their house." Mr. Malconcer, "Potential of having many events is what makes it commercial." Folks, if I had a Ferrari and I, and I'm going to steal this quote from someone else, but if I had a Ferrari, okay, and it can go 240 miles an hour, I wish I did and I don't, but if I did, the cops can't give me a ticket for my potential to go 240 miles an hour, not until I've broken a bylaw, a regulation. And it's the same thing here likewise. If they haven't done anything that is prevented in the bylaw, then it can't be enforced, folks. And there's nothing in our bylaw preventing it. In fact, there's only information about events in our bylaw allows events under tents, three a year, implying that events are allowed. And unfortunately, for the Viscos or for the board, if they want to regulate this with the town, there's just nothing that describes event or large event or small event or medium event. So until that happens, they are allowed to do what they've been doing on the property. And so I'll just, I'll wrap this up. I know I've gone probably on too long, but obviously, we're asking you to uphold Paul's The bylaw allows rentals and events on private property and so have your decisions in the past, multiple decisions. And again, if the town wants to regulate this, then it should be done properly at town meeting, there should be a bylaw so that people have advanced notice. And if you enforce this against my client and not everyone else that's having it, then you're treating him and her differently than everyone else on Nantucket and that is by definition arbitrary and capricious. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Bodett. Attorney Alger?
I just want to correct the record. I was sitting happily in my office just watching this. I don't appreciate being called a liar, my credibility before this board is very important to me and I just want to say that I did just happen to be here at the last meeting. I was here for another matter. I do not represent the Viscos in connection with this matter. Yes, Ms. Visco is my paralegal, she's been my paralegal for over 30 years, so I don't think it's any secret. I think everybody pretty much knows that. I think everybody pretty much knows that. I did represent them for a moment before the planning board on some things, but I have no connection with this matter. What I said at the meeting, the last meeting, was 100% accurate. And I do not appreciate being impugned by Mr. Feely and his counsel. If anyone is being disingenuous in this matter, it's Mr. Feely. I would just like the record to show my objection to being categorized in that way. And I came here specifically to say that. I'm going to leave now. I'm going to come back for my own matter, which is later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I wouldn't mind addressing that, if I may.
Okay. Just, I saw Billy had his hand up.
We've had a hand online for a little bit. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Sorry. For some reason, I don't, I know I'm a, like, am I an administrator? Because I don't, I don't see, I don't see those on here. So, I thought the whole point of me having this, so that I'd be able to see them.
I'll show you a little trick. If you keep this up over the side, you'll see who's down there.
Oh. Oh, okay. Okay, okay. All right. So, Rick, you can go, and then, and then we'll go to the person who has their hand up.
I, I guess I just want to address that Sarah mentioned I had impugned her and called her a liar, and I don't think I did that. But I will say that I was taken aback by your comments at the last hearing. That is true. And I will also say that I respect the fact that she stood up to help a friend of hers, and Holly Visco and Steve, all right? They're good people. I've known them a long time, too. Doesn't mean I think they're right. If it was my paralegal sitting up here, I would stand up before you and I would straight up tell you, "This is my paralegal, and I care about her, and I'm going to say what I'm going to say because I want you to do what I want, what I think is right." And I think that's the difference. And I don't think anybody called her a liar.
Okay.
And for the record, I just want to echo exactly what Rick said. I didn't call her a liar. And I just felt like there was a, there was a lack of transparency that was, was hard to hear at the moment.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to go to Mr. Marky, John Marky, who has had his hand up. And I apologize that I did not see your hand up earlier.
No stress, Madam Chair, you're not the first woman to have ignored me in my life. So, I'm going to, I just got to figure out how to put my, my voice on. I guess, I'm not my video. I guess I can't. My name is John Marky. I am representing Doris Strang. And I think the board has done a great job today on a particular thing. I think it's a narrow question for you. You know of the event that everybody's concerned of. I'd respectfully say you need to make a finding that he did conduct commercial operations, which were unacceptable. I'm not saying he does it every day, but he has done it. And so, your first job is to say, "You have done it, the evidence is there, and as a result, we ask you that you cease and desist going forward." I think that's the first task before the board. And I would respectfully say the board is pretty clear. And implicitly, and I would suggest maybe even in good faith, he's acknowledged that that happened at least one time, when he took the money for the event that involved all of the activity that was discussed. The second thing that the board did very well today is to say, "Well, now that there's a finding, you are technically being treated differently than people who have never done this. And we're calling upon you to take practical actions to make sure that it doesn't happen again." And they would include two of the things that I think that you both have mentioned in the board. One is, are you going to continue to advertise this in the manner that was shown today, and in the manner that basically invites people to see it as a venue for large events? Control your advertising. If you don't, you're, you are going to have an issue. The second thing is, what are your contracts, say, for your leases? Are your contracts written in a way that makes it clear what the requirements are and avoids the need for this to happen after the fact? And if he's doing everything that's possible by doing those things, and he gets brought back again, I think at that time, you may have to say, "Do we also have to say, violating the cease and desist order requires some sanctions?" But for now, I basically respectfully ask that you, number one, make a finding that he did engage in commercial activity. Number two, issue an order that he cease and desist from doing so in the future. And number three, strongly advise him to engage in practices through advertising and contractual arrangements that will avoid him from having this problem in the future. That's my only comments, and I appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Feely, and then I'd like to just circle back to the building commissioner, and then, and then have some deliberation from the board, if I don't have anyone else in the public to speak.
All right. I just want to point out again, Mr. Marky, Attorney Marky, we, we received a letter from him, and I know other neighbors have as well, saying different things, but in all instances, it relates to 14 Trip Drive and not 59 South Shore. And so I think that's the, the primary concern that's going on with him and, and the Strangs. I mean, obviously, they're going to say differently. But i- i- if, if you agreed with him, and the wedding was a violation, I would think, there's a lot of weddings planned for next year that, that are going to have some problems that you need to consider as part of your decision, that are already planned. Anyway, go ahead.
All right. So, Alisa, is that a question for Mr. Feely, or just a comment about?
It's a couple of comments going back to Mr. Bodat, and then just a comment to Mr. Feely.
Okay. Before, before you go on, I just, I do want to remind everyone again, and a couple people have said it. We are only addressing the, the building commissioner's determination that 59 South Shore Road, the uses that, or the use that occurred is not, the, the appeal of the building commissioner's determination that the use at 59 South Shore Road is not a commercial event space or commercial use. Anything that's happening at 14 Drive, any equestrian plans that are meant to do, anything that's happening in the future, that is not what we are tasked with doing. And as, you know, as, as Attorney Marky just said, it's a, it's a, he was talking about something else, but it is a very narrow thread that we are looking at. So, I, I, all this other mention of other things, those are not within our purview. Alisa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think anybody's rights should be taken away, but this is not zoned commercially. So, it, that's, and it is being used commercially when you rent it out, you're not at the event, you're not throwing the event. That's kind of it. Like, whether it's commercial or not, which is really what this boils down to, that's the bottom line. But it seems like you really do seem to care about what all your neighbors think about you and how they feel about you. And there is a lot going on in this neighborhood. And I think you have a lot of respect in this community for all of the things you do for the vets, and you host these cool parties for people that serve our country. And I commend you greatly. Nobody has a problem with that, that I've heard of. And I bet they would commend you, too. But you've pushed the envelope, and this is where the problem comes in. And you've pushed it from residential use to commercial use, and you've pushed it too far. So, I don't think anybody's wanting to keep you from having a party for your daughter's graduation, or a cookout for the soccer team. That's number one. Number two, if there is not a commercial, no, no, I'm still talking. Well, he can't interrupt me. So, if this is not a commercial kitchen, where's the food coming from? Who made the food? If a commercial caterer cannot work there, where'd the food come from? How did, you don't have to answer right now, I'm not done. But I really think my question still stands. And, oh, the Ferrari analogy, if you're doing donuts in the street and nobody sees you, and who knows what your mile an hour is in the Ferrari, and the neighbors hear it and they're upset by it, there's going to be a problem. And you, being the Ferrari owner, and know its capacity, should know that. And this is also nothing against short-term rentals at all. It has nothing to do with short-term rentals. I don't know why anybody has even brought short-term rentals up. So, it just sounds like the difference in whether you're hosting the event, which seems like a normal use and something that's your right in every way. But if you're not hosting it, and you're renting it out for other people to run the show and earning money for it, that is commercial use. And I am going to vote against the building department's decision that it was not commercial view, use. If this instance was, and I also believe you sincerely that you don't want to do this again, but how can they trust you with everything else that's going on in the neighborhood? I implore you to think of a way to make your neighbors comfortable so that they like you, because you seem to care about it. Somehow, do something that makes them comfortable. I, I think I'm being reasonable, and this is not an attack on you, I swear to God. And I can separate the two situations. But you got to be logical, because you don't want all your neighbors to hate you, and you live here year-round, and you want them to like you. That's clear. And everybody wants that for you. I don't want to see events for vets to stop. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Joe.
I was just going to say, we've gotten way far afield, in my opinion. To me, it comes down to, was it commercial activities, those five events? I think it was, okay?
What, what are the five events?
There was a wedding, and then there was five other, four other?
Just rentals, four, I think his had five rentals.
Wasn't there parties and stuff? Two, two other ones?
No. One, well, wasn't there, sorry. There was five and a half, five and a half weeks of rental total in two and a half years. Five weeks in two and a half years. One big wedding that is the, the, the big focus that brought this to the, to the real forefront. A, a private dinner party thing that I heard even the opponent's attorney say that was not a problem. So, I honestly wasn't even thinking about that.
It's not a matter of whether it's a problem.
And then, no, no, and then, and then a wed, another wedding, but that was a wedding that was like family friends or something that you, you or your wife officiated. And is that it for events?
There was a, there was a, another fundraiser.
Oh, yeah, the fundraiser for Barstool Sports.
But I think the biggest issue is the wedding.
No, I understand that.
Okay, sorry.
Alls I'm saying is, was it commercial or not? I'm saying all of those things were commercial, my opinion. You, you think, you think other ways, that's fine.
I, I.
And the only other thing I think is that, that was not a tent. Just, there was a structure that was built without building permit or HDC approval. And I think everything else we've been talking about is just.
I agree. I think we need to wrap it up and have some deliberation.
So, I think, you know, my opinion is that there was only one commercial event, which was where he rented his house out and had, and the wedding took place when he wasn't on the premises. That was commercial. The other ones, I do think are, they're fundraisers, they're good community things, and he was present.
So, I disagree, I disagree. I don't think, I don't, I don't understand how them being present on the property, like, there are so many weddings that happen at private homes here on the island. I, I mean, I would be surprised to learn that the, the end owners of those properties are home, in the home, when there's a wedding going on, like.
Well, once you rent your house out, and it becomes a, a large-scale event like this, it becomes commercial.
No, it doesn't. Our code doesn't say that. I mean, again, all of the things that we just, like, that, that we thought for, in this town administration, the licensing admin, or whatever her name, sorry, the licensing.
Amy Baxter.
Yeah, licensing at the police department, the building commissioner, town administration, the Board of Health, all said that we may want to regulate, but there's, they're not, that we don't have that, we don't have anything in our regulations right now. There were no noise vi, there's no noise violation. There was no zoning violation. There was no licensing violation on the tents. Was it, do you think it's a structure? I guess maybe that need, that, but, but just let me finish. I have listened to everybody. Let me finish. So, the, the, I agree that there are some things, and this went way over what maybe anyone anticipated in, in several areas, right? Like, the tent is way bigger than what people thought was a tent. The, the, the security was way bigger than anybody thought. The, the parking, all of these things, right? So, there's this huge culmination. But I think what this begs is, do we need to rethink, the same as short-term rentals, right? No, making an analogy, not bringing up short-term rentals in this instance. But the bylaw is vague, and we are working towards a process to creating regulations. I personally do not think that we can regulate looking backwards. We, we recognize, okay, this is an issue that going forward can be a problem, or can be an issue, and that needs to be regulated, not just for one property, but for the entire island. If that is the will of the, the inhabitants, then that will be dealt with at town meeting. I don't see the ZBA, and I've said this through short-term rentals and through other issues where this wedding situation or, and use has come up. If there's no zoning violation that I can see, there's no zoning bylaw that prohibits this, I do not see how we then overturn our building commissioner on what basis, that we don't. There's no, there's no, there's nothing in the zoning code that's.
Because it's commerc, because it's commercial.
Because, because someone made a complaint. I ca, because someone made a complaint, the building commissioner addressed it and said, "I hear your complaint. There's no zoning violation. That's not an actual thing."
But there is, if it's commercial, commercial's for profit. And if it's a commercial activity in a residential zone, which to me, this was, there was lots of money exchanged hands, not all with Mr. Feely. Lots of money was, and any father who had a wedding knows, it was lots of money. Okay? That's a commercial activity.
So, we are no longer, we're going to say today, we're not going to allow weddings in, in residential anymore. A third party, no third-party weddings in any home on Nantucket. Has to be your daughter, your cousin, your best friend, for free. Nobody makes any money.
Well, we're not saying that.
What are you saying? How are you determining?
We're addressing, we're addressing the cause, one decision for this one person.
But you're basing it on the fact, what I'm hearing is.
No, I'm basing it on the fact that commercial's not allowed.
Right, but you're, but what, how are you making it commercial? Because they made money?
Because it was a crap load of money.
But if you're renting your house out, you're all, anyone was going to make money. So, that, if you do this for him, it's going to affect every single person.
Well, I, you know, the hard thing is, and I think is as a board, we have to start making some stances so that there does become zoning regulation that protects people.
But I think that discussion's already happening.
Don't do that, then, you know, it's the same thing with short-term rentals. We make no decisions, well, actually, I don't sit on any of those. But, you know, we can't seem to get any regulations passed on that, because.
But we don't pass regulations. That's not our job. Our job is to look at the zoning code.
But we are looking at one event here, which, and I agree with, I can't remember the attorney's.
Marky.
Marky. You know, the question is, is do we think that this event was a commercial, you know?
That's what an advocate is telling us. That's not our, our charge is to look at the building commissioner's decision and the zoning code and see whether this is a commercial use. I don't see how we.
I think it is if there was money exchanged. I mean, I agree with you, but that is our charge.
That's, money exchanged is not.
No, it was promoted to make more money. And then, I got nothing, no problem with that, but that makes it commercial.
I don't, well, I'm one person. I don't see that. Yeah.
Hopefully, he's not going to do it again.
If he's not going to do it again, then it's no problem, right?
Who, who do you have?
So, thank you, Madam Chair. So, Attorney Dan Bailey's hand is raised, and also Jim Munden.
Okay. So, I'll go to Jim first, because he hasn't spoken yet, and then we'll go to Attorney Bailey. Jim, I think you're still on mute. Do you need to move him over, Billy? Oh, there we go.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can.
Yeah, sorry. I'm, I'm coming to you live from a Target parking lot in New Hampshire. And it's the, it's Spotty, so you might lose me. I, I take it we're at deliberations now, or are we still kind of doing back and forth?
We kind of went into that, but, but get, get, get your comments on the record while, while you have service.
I don't, I, you know, again, I, I never know what the standard is for determining what Mr. Murphy's determination. But I, I, I don't see anything here that would, that, that would allow me to overturn his decision. I think, I think it needs to be upheld. You know, as he stated in the last meeting, and again, it was reiterated, there's really nothing for him, he's got nothing to rely on to, to enforce this. And. And we're not making policy, we're not supposed to make policy. So I just don't, you know, I, I understand what the neighbors are saying, I understand the situation. But I, I think, I think we would cross the line by overturning Inspector Murphy's decision. I don't, I don't think whether it's a charity event or not a charity event makes a difference. And I don't think the size of it makes a difference, as long as there's compliance with the three tents and, per se, for, for the event. And I, I don't see it here. So I, I would be for upholding Mr. Murphy's determination.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jim. Hearing Jim's comments, I do want to get back to you at some point, Mr. Murphy, to just have you reiterate your decision and why you made your decision. So I see Dan Bailey has his hand up still, Attorney Bodett is at the mic, and Mr., remind me your last name. Herschel, okay. So I think we'll go, Dan Bailey, Rick, and then we'll allow you to speak. And then if you, did you want to go to the mic as well? And then you can go to the mic as well, okay? And then I, and then I'd like to move for deliberations, okay? So...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I want to quickly bring up two points. The first is, you know, Mr. Bodett and others have advocated that if something is not specifically regulated under the zoning bylaw, then it's allowed. Quite frankly, that defies common sense. Does that mean that, and then, you know, some sort of noxious, a dump or commercial use, it's not regulated at this particular location, but obviously you can't do it. Let me give you a little better example. The bylaw regulates primary, secondary, and tertiary dwellings. It does not regulate a fourth, or fifth, or sixth dwelling on a lot, nor does it say that they're prohibited. Generally, the way that bylaws are interpreted is, in Massachusetts, bylaws, zoning bylaws specifically allow certain uses, and uses that are not allowed are prohibited. Here, the use that is allowed is a single-family residence. In order for these other uses, these collateral uses, whether they be what people seem to accept as okay, which are, you know, small-scale events or large events, they've got to be accessory, customary, and incidental to the normal use. Under no set of circumstances can that wedding possibly be considered customary and incidental to a normal use, particularly when it was a rental. I would submit that even if that wedding was hosted by Mr. Feely, the size and scope of it make it, you know, to the level where it's much more of a commercial event with commercial caterers, et cetera, coming in. The other point that I want to make, we've heard a lot from Mr. Feely and Mr. Bodett about the mistakes that they made with respect to this wedding. What we haven't heard them say is they won't do it again. And if they are sincere about not doing it again, then they would not have any problem with this board finding that that wedding was a commercial use and overturning the building inspector's decision. Finally, I just want to respond to Mr. Mundani's comment. Whether this board likes it or not, your job is to enforce the zoning bylaw. And the fact that there's not a great remedy is not a reason that you can't go ahead and enforce it. I think this board has pretty competent counsel, you can close this hearing, you can consult with town council, and talk about how to craft a decision that properly and enforceably overturns the building inspector's decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Billy, did you have something that you...
No, not at the moment.
Okay. Mr. Bodett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do want to address a couple of, of the prior comments and a couple of things that Mr. Bailey just mentioned. First and foremost, I never said you can do anything as long as it's not prohibited. I said, "This is not prohibited, and it's specifically allowed." The bylaw specifically says, on a residential property, not a commercial property, residential property, you can have up to three tented events per year, total of nine days total. Okay? And that's what happened on the, the big event we're talking about. And is that tent ridiculous? Yes, but it's held up by stakes, ropes, and do I think it's going to get... Say that again? Okay, yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Yes. Yes, it is. Look, I don't want to debate the tent, the thing is, the thing was a beast, okay? Fine.
Wait, we're not, we're not, first of all, the, whether it's a tent or not is not before us. It was licensed and given a, whatever, a tent permit or whatever by the licensing administrator. So that is not even up for discussion.
Thank you. My, my point is, you're allowed to have a tent. If he pulled a tent, someone pulled a tent permit, the person having the wedding, I guess, they issued a tent permit, then it's a tent, okay? And you're allowed to have it. That's specifically what I said. Okay? And, and contrary to what Mr. Bailey said, first of all, noxious and offensive uses in Section 7 is specifically prohibited, okay? So it does prohibit some things. Number two, the bylaw does specifically prohibit more than two dwellings if it doesn't allow it. In Section 7, it says, what's prohibited? Any more than two dwellings unless otherwise allowed by this bylaw. So the only exception to that is a tertiary dwelling, now an accessory dwelling. So, so he's wrong about that, too. And, and I, just to answer your, your question, Elise, it's not a commercial kitchen, a caterer can, can go there, not allowed to cook there, is allowed to, to organize it, heat it up, but they have to cook it in a commercial kitchen. I mean, if a caterer comes to my house, it's the same thing. They, they can, it, it, look, it's, it's a great kitchen, and it's set up to cater, but it's not a commercial kitchen. That's my point. And so, and, and the last thing I want to leave you with, is, you know, you're talking about, you know, regulations, and, and some of you are saying, "We should be the ones to regulate it," and some of you are saying, "It's meant for town meeting." What's the purpose of regulations? It's to provide predictability. If there, and, and I think you all know me well enough, if, if there was something in our bylaw that said you're not allowed to have a, a wedding over 250 people, and rent it to someone to do that, and my client did it, I wouldn't be standing here defending him. I'd be telling him, "Suck it up, don't do it again." I, I mean, so, you know, there is no regulation for it. I don't think it can be regu, it cannot be enforced for that reason. So, and, and just one more thing about, you know, the rental, all my client did was a short-term rental. Same price as any other rental, if it was just a family of 10, or five, or whatever. Didn't charge anything more because the person wanted to have a rent, a, a wedding there. He was clear, he knew about it. But if he thought he was doing anything wrong, it wouldn't have been done.
Can I ask a very quick question? Okay, so can we, I'd like to hear, oh, sorry, Herschel, and then the building commissioner.
My name is Herschel Allerhand, I live on 47 Union Street. I have no dogs in this fight, I'm here on a different matter, I don't represent anyone, I'm not a neighbor. But I just want to ask this question, are you saying that my neighbor in a residential area can hold special events every week, get paid for it, and it's not considered
No, I don't think I'm saying that. Are you asking me directly?
Well, yes, I guess I'm asking directly. If he lives there, and, and, and even if the event doesn't break any problems in terms of noise, or crowds, or anything like that, but he gets paid for it, and he does this every week, he holds a wedding or a special event, is that's not considered commercial?
That's not my determination to make. That would be someone would file a complaint, it would go to the building commissioner, and the building commissioner would make that determination. Yeah. So let's, let the building commissioner respond to the complaint that was filed on 59 South Shore.
Yeah, thank you, Paul Murphy, building commissioner. I, I didn't take enforcement action against Mr. Feely, because there's nothing in the bylaw to enforce. And my position on this hasn't changed. Again, it's, it, it was a big party, and, and as the building commissioner, I can't regulate parties, large or small, how somebody rents their property. I really have no, I'd have no jurisdiction on the prop, I wouldn't even be able to make a site visit, to even ask him any questions. I mean, there's nothing I can do about this. So I didn't enforce the zoning code against Mr. Feely. There's nothing in the zoning code that I could use against him to enforce this.
And are there any, were there any violations for this event?
No, none to my knowledge.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the building commissioner?
Thank you.
Okay. You do, or you don't? Oh, okay. Sorry, Elise, you had a question?
Very quick question for Mr. Bodett. I missed what you said, but you said the word obnoxious.
No, noxious.
Oh, you said obnoxious.
No, like, like a...
It's a little obnoxious.
I can't remember offhand, because I don't have the bylaw on me, but I know that Section 7 specifically prohibits...
I think you're right.
Injurious, obnoxious, offensive, dangerous, or nuisance to the community.
Okay, I think that's what we're talking about here.
It's not what the complaint was, and that's not...
So, but I'm just saying.
But Joe, what is that definition from that you were just reading?
I'm actually not sure, I, I'll give it to you. I was looking for not allowed when I was searching the bylaw.
Oh, got it.
It says, "Any building or structure, or any use of any building, structure, or premises which is injurious, obnoxious, offensive, dangerous, or nuisance to the community or to the neighborhood through noise, vibration, concussion, odors, fumes, smoke, ashes, dust, harmful liquids or substances, danger of fire or explosion, or other objection will feature detrimental to the community or neighborhood, health, safety, convenience, morals, or welfare."
And what's the heading, what's the...
I don't know. When I printed it out, I...
But you, you search our zoning bylaw under not allowed.
But in reference to what?
I'm just saying I printed this out, I wasn't...
It's a zoning bylaw.
He was saying, did you say obnoxious or obnoxious?
No, I know, I was asking under what section.
Where he was at. So I wasn't...
I'm pretty sure that's under Section 7. And so if you're going to, you know, my point, as I mentioned before, is, if you're going to make a determination that this is a nuisance, then I think you have to do that for every event that's planned. And that includes, in other words, you can't, and I, and I understand your distinctions with receiving money for a wedding as opposed to Mariah Mitchell having a, you know, their party out in Tom Navas or whatever. But if, if one loud party is a nuisance, another one is too, or, or is noxious, or whatever, however you want to determine, so...
Well, there's always that one person that ruins it for everybody.
I still go back, it's a difference between commercial and non-commercial.
Okay. And, okay, so you've been waiting very... I'd like, and Jim, Jim, do you have your hand back up again?
Yeah, I just want to ask, I want to get, if you don't mind, get...
Can you hold on one second, so I can let this, one, there's a woman who's been waiting for a while to speak, so can you just get right back to you? I just, I just saw your hand up. So, go ahead, just if you could say your name for the, and your address for the record. Thank you.
Sharon Chalk. My husband, I'm here with my husband, Peter, and we're Director Butters. We live at 61 South Shore Road. And I appreciate your time this afternoon. I did submit through Mr. Said, my full comments, but I only wanted to just point out a couple, because other people have already said some of the things that are in my comments. And simply, it is that we have absolutely nothing personal against Jamie. We've been neighbors now since he started building his property. And we're not here to decide the size of anything, but just because someone isn't saying anything, and we've learned now in hindsight, 2020, that we do need to voice our frustrations, whether it's by calling the police, and that probably will be our methodology, because, you know, just to get something on the records, to say that there is a problem. But the one specific thing I really wanted to mention was that there was a tented event. I'm not speaking about the wedding. And that the renter came over to our property two days in a row, and didn't ask for the homeowner, and basically proceeded to try to pay off our roofers. Our roofers did not do that on day one. But on the second day, they came over, again, the people from the event, and proceeded then to pay off our roofers. And we were told through the owner of the roofing company that it was a thousand plus in cash, to get them to stop, because our roofers were noisy for their event. That caused a delay in our roofing, we had company coming in, and you don't need to hear our personal issues with regard to that. I guess the point we wanted to make was, is that Mr. Feely is responsible for the behavior, and has to accept responsibility for whatever he's renting it for, whatever its purposes, that there, there are, could be things like that that could occur. And this took us totally off guard, we were floored, and we should have said something. And in hindsight, we regret that we didn't. So going forward, we will, it doesn't mean that things aren't bothering the neighbors, but we will, and unfortunately, the police probably are the only way to get things documented, which is a hassle for the police department, but I can see frustration going undocumented, and that's just not right in this case, and so there are things that do occur. So anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. I don't, we, I don't think, I don't, I don't think we need to get into a back and forth, but if that was behavior that was done by a renter...
That's not, actually, there's a, just very quickly, just a couple little things I want to clean up on. One is, that the kitchen has never been used by a caterer, because that would be illegal, and it's not happened. And so to answer Elise's question is, you know, if, if there was an event where there was a caterer, it was a food truck, or it was prepared offsite. Okay? And that's always been the case. As far as the question, just Joe brought up, you know, that we're getting paid, the, the folks that had the big wedding paid us the same weekly rate that we got for rentals both before and after last year, so later in September and before, by small families. So there was no, like, specific payment for the wedding, that was part of the one-week rental, I just want to make that clear. Obviously, the, the bride and the groom weren't charging anybody to be a part of the wedding. And so it, it's very specific to size, is...
That's not what I was saying, that, that you were making extra money, or anything like that. What I was saying is, that there was money made by the caterer, the wedding planner...
But not for the wedding.
So on. Pardon me?
But not for the wedding. It was a rental, it was a one-week rental, same as a...
No, no, I said, you didn't, I'm not saying you made the money, I'm saying it was commercial, because, I mean, it would be like if I had a big poker tournament, got to put a ten up, and had a poker tournament, and charge everybody, I like to play poker, a thousand bucks to be in the poker tournament. That would be a commercial event.
Can, can we, Madam Chair, just, I just want to be clear, that someone else coming to your property, whether it's a roofer, or a caterer, making money for themselves, the caterer or the roofer, is not a commercial use on the property. They are...
Okay, so, we, we're not...
I'm sorry, it's the same as a carpenter, making the money.
We're not going to, I don't want to get into a back and forth. Joe, well, that's, your opinion is, is it is, his opinion is, it isn't. Jim, I want to hear from you. And then I, and then I think, and then I think we need to close the public hearing.
Yeah, just a comment on what Joe just said, I, I don't view that, you know, the house cleaner and the landscaper get paid for people who rent their house out, and that, that doesn't make it a commercial operation, because you're paying, people are servicing that house, so... But I just want to, I hope we're not going to go down the noxious part of that. I, I don't think that the complaint has brought it up, but I just would like Paul's opinion, whether he thinks this, how he would enforce that with regard to what Jamie's doing there.
So whether, whether...
Can you, can you say it again, Joe? Noxious.
It's a violation of Section 7 of the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
So, I, so Mr. Murphy, I guess the question is, do you, do you think that the holding of a wedding or other event at a residential property in a residential neighborhood is a violation of Section 7 of the bylaw, which Mr. Markland, you read, allowed, that talked about noxious, disruptive... Yeah, yeah, no, I know, but, 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 so...
No, I don't think that's a violation of the zoning bylaw, or any bylaw.
Okay. Okay. So I think we need to close the public hearing, and talk about how we're going to... Because I own, I see Dan, I see Jim and Dan.
And then we have, sorry, Madam Chair.
Oh, Charity Benz has her hands up. Charity, you're going to be the final comment on the day. Charity, you're going to be the final comment on the day.
Thank you. I've been sitting, listening to this. And I just happen to have a copy of Black's Law Dictionary. And I just wanted to read the definition of commercial property, income-producing property, e.g., office buildings, apartments, et cetera, as opposed to residential property. Thank you.
Thank you. That was insightful. Okay. No, I mean it. That was a good one. Okay, so can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Lisa's made the motion. Elisa has seconded. And... So sitting on this, now I don't know where I wrote it down. But we'll, so roll call vote. Lisa?
Aye.
Elisa? Joe?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, so public hearing is closed. So let's talk about this. I feel like of all the comments, including my own, Jim was the most succinct in summing this up, which is, which for me is the basis of my position. I agree with Jim that I don't see how we overturn Commissioner Murphy's decision where there's no code violation that he can look to, and there's nothing that he can look to to enforce it. And the other thing that I think we... The other things that I think we should look at are the comments from the Board of Health, the comments from the town administration, again, the building commissioner, and the licensing, and even the police department, that there were no noise violations. But as Jim said, I'm one person. So I'd like to hear more about how this... How do you think we can overturn the building commissioner from any of the, anyone?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
You know, it's clear that Jamie lives there, so it's a residential property. I don't think it's a commercial property. Just as any rental we've determined is an accessory use. And this is an accessory use. It's not a commercial property. People aren't being charged, like, separately to come to his place and, you know, party or whatever. The person who rents it has an event there. And I've been to plenty of weddings where, in Tom Nevers, not even that one house that came before us, where they were lighting fireworks off and hitting golf balls into the ocean, which I'm sure is a violation. But that suddenly doesn't make it a commercial property as we in Nantucket see it. I mean, it definitely, that one wedding crossed, might have crossed the line. I mean, in a lot of people's views, in the neighborhood's view, which I understand, and there's a lot of things going on there. That neighborhood was quiet. Now, it's got all kinds of things going on. But I just don't see, under our zoning, that Paul made a wrong determination here. I just don't see anything commercial about this property. And if you do, then, you know, Elizabeth Bagley's place is a commercial property and anyone else who has fundraisers throughout the summer. We're not talking every weekend. He's already stated that, you know, it's really not that often. And they would be limited to three tented events. So you're talking three events that would, you know, rival that one. And that's allowed.
Does anyone have any comments?
Are we just going to get a chance to talk or just...
Yeah, no, I'm asking you if you have any comments.
I'm just going to go back to my original feeling on this. You know, like I sort of said, and I didn't mean it sarcastically, I meant it, you know, truly. There's always somebody that ruins it for everybody, and I feel like this is the event that sort of ruined it for everybody. And I feel there is remorse on Jamie's part because he, this wouldn't be a learning situation for him or a learning experience if it didn't go one toke over the line, which is basically what it did. He learned, and he can speak to this. I know it's public comment is closed, but he wouldn't be saying it's a learning experience if it wasn't out of the ordinary, out of his usual event happenings. So I don't want to compare it to Bagley or anybody else's wedding. This is in front of us on its own. And it is our job as the zoning Board of Appeals to draw the line somewhere. And we have to draw the line at this. I am not, with my vote today, I'm not trying to prevent Mr. Feely from having future events. But with all of the parking issues, you can, you know, say he didn't violate anything, but he clearly did things that are wrong from a common sense standpoint that nobody's happy with. So I'm sort of looking at this from the standpoint of he's taken it too far, but he obviously doesn't want to do this again. But I would like some kind of guarantee what this learning experience taught him and how he's going to move forward because, hands down, no question, this particular event was a commercial use. It was beyond what everyone sort of does here on Nantucket with the weddings and the fundraisers and the graduation parties. It was over the top. And they may not have violated the noise ordinance, but, and they may have gotten their permit for the tent, but in his own words, it was a learning experience. So he's acknowledging wrongdoing and that he doesn't want to do it again. So I'd like to know from him and his counsel how he plans on doing that so that this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Okay, so we're not taking any more information because we closed the public hearing to deliberate. So Lisa or Joe, do you guys have any further comments?
No, I mean, we're three to two. We're just wasting time.
Okay, so, great.
Let's get going, get on to the next thing.
All right, fine.
Right?
Yeah. I would just say that I, you know...
There's nothing against Paul either, by the way. It's not, you know, it's a tough spot to be in.
Okay, we're, hold on. You guys are talking over each other. So Joe, finish what you want to say, then Lisa wants to say her comments. Do you have anything else?
Well, only that, for Dan's words, I don't think this was customary or incidental to a normal residential use. This was not a normal or customary use to a residential use, this particular situation. And I think it could have caused potential harm to the neighborhood if something had happened because of the parking, just the congestion on that road. I mean, the fact that it's a dead end makes it a million times worse.
Okay. Billy?
Yeah, I know it's been said a few times. And I just, before the board makes a motion, I want to be clear. The board is charged here with determining whether or not Mr. Murphy applied the zoning bylaw correctly and made his determination correctly. Everything else is out of the window. That is literally what's before this board.
Okay. So the motion, which, I'll make the motion on this one. Motion to overturn the building commissioner's determination regarding the use of 59 South Shore Road and directing the issuance of a zoning enforcement order requiring the property owner to cease and desist using the property as an event space or for any other commercial use. So we're making a motion to overturn the building commissioner's determination regarding the use of 59 South Shore Road. So we'll do a roll call vote.
Could I just make comments before we vote?
Yep.
I just... I'm concerned that we're redefining accessory use in a different way than we did with the short-term rentals. I know that we're looking at this one case, but we're saying that accessory use is a lot more limited. And we also open up for challenges across the island for all these houses that are used as wedding venues in the fall or the spring. And we're going to have to split hairs over what crosses the line and what doesn't cross the line. And I think what the town has in place with noise violations and tent rules keeps it in check. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Just a point of order, Madam Chair. I guess perhaps it would be helpful to tell the members...
I will.
How many votes you need.
Yep. So we're voting to overturn...
I'm going to second your motion first.
Okay, so hold on. We're... The vote will be to overturn the building commissioner's determination. We need four members in favor to overturn the building commissioner's determination. If there are fewer than four members in favor, the determination of the building commissioner is upheld. So again, the suggest, I would need a second, but the suggested motion is motion to overturn the building commissioner's determination regarding the use of 59 South Shore Road and directs the issuance of a zoning enforcement order requiring the owner of the property to cease and desist using the property as an event space or for any other commercial use. Did you say you were going to second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So I'm making the motion. Joe is seconding the motion. So I'll, again, do a roll call vote. Joe, are you in favor?
Yes, aye.
I am not in favor of overturning the building commissioner's determination. Jim?
Nay.
Elisa?
Yes.
And Lisa?
Aye.
Okay, so that is three to two. It does not carry. So the determination of the building commissioner is upheld for 59 South Shore Road. Okay. So, yep.
Madam Chair, can I ask? Can I, do you need me for any other matters? I can...
I'd like to take, yeah, can we take a five-minute break? And I can determine that, or maybe even... Maybe even quicker than that, but I just need to check in at home.
No problem.
So just take a maybe five-minute break. So we're back, and we are moving to... What did you say, 14 Tatano continued?
We have to formally continue 14 Tatano, and then we're going to move on to 32 Monomoy. But please just continue that first.
Yeah, so, okay. So would someone make a motion to continue 2400614 Tatamo Way Realty Trust to the next regularly scheduled CBA meeting? And is it March 13th?
Yeah.
March 13th.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Joe makes the motion. Elisa seconds. So Joe?
Aye.
Elisa? Lisa?
Aye.
Myself, aye. And did Jim pop off?
No, I'm here.
Okay. You want to just vote on this one? And then I think you can go if you want.
Okay, aye.
Okay, so that one is... What, bye? All right, so that one is continued to March 13th. And we will move on to 240009 Jeff McDermott at all, 32 Monomoy Road. Nina Pickering Cook presenting.
And I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make sure. Mark Poore is online, and he will need to be activated for this.
Yeah, yep. So Attorney Pickering Cook, you have the floor.
Hi, it's actually me instead of Nina, Kristin Gagelas.
Oh, hi, how are you?
Good to see you. Hi, Kristin Gagelas online. And with me also on the line, who he may need to be elevated to panelist, who is Jeff McDermott. As I said, I'm Kristin Gagelas from Anderson Krieger. My firm represents several neighbors of 32 Monomoy Road, Jeff McDermott of 38 Monomoy Road, Matthew Westfall of 30 Monomoy Road, Stephen Ketchum of 34 Monomoy Road, Bob Landreth and Deborah Landreth of 4 Berkeley Avenue, and Mark Wilmot of 33 Monomoy Road. My clients are appealing the building commissioner's December 3, 2024 denial of zoning enforcement with respect to 32 Monomoy Road. Before I get into the merits of the appeal, I will just acknowledge that I know this board is very familiar with the various appeals related to short-term rental and the aspects of this conversation. So I will be as brief as possible. I think fortunately, this case is extremely clear. will be as brief as possible. I think fortunately this case is extremely clear-cut, perhaps one of the easiest and most clear-cut short-term rentals that have, short-term rental appeals that have come in front of the board. 32 Monomoy Road is a six-bedroom, five-and-a-half-bath house in the Lug One District of Nantucket. It is owned by Copley Monomoy LLC, who purchased the property in 2015 and owns multiple other luxury homes on Nantucket. In the December decision, the building commissioner determined, without providing an explanation, that use of the property exclusively for short-term rentals does not violate Nantucket's zoning bylaws, despite its location in a residential zone. This finding is plainly inconsistent with the town zoning bylaw and the decision in Ward versus Town of Nantucket, the decision that came down in March of 2024, finding that short-term rentals are not allowed as a principal use of primary dwellings in Nantucket's residential districts, where no one resides at the property and it is being solely used for short-term rentals. Short-term rental is the exclusive use and therefore obviously the principal use, and that use is prohibited. As you know, this is not the first time this property has come before this board due to its use as a short-term rental. In October 2022, the same abutters or same neighbors requested enforcement at the property due to its use as a short-term rental, and in January 2023, this board upheld that denial of enforcement. The neighbors filed suit and proceeded with litigation, but after the land court issued a decision in Ward versus Town of Nantucket in March, all parties to that litigation, including the instant abutters, Copley Monomoy, and the town, agreed to stay the case, given that Ward clearly decided the issue. Interestingly, the, after the decision in Ward and a failed town meeting vote to amend the bylaw to explicitly allow short-term rentals, Copley placed all of its Nantucket properties on the market. Also importantly, during that litigation, Copley admitted in documents exchanged between parties as part of litigation, that no resident has lived in the property since at least 2015, when Copley purchased it, and that the property is available for rent 365 days per year. That case had a status conference on February 4 in front of the land court, at which point the parties decided to wait to move forward and lift the stay on that case until the board made a decision on this appeal. And it is clear what decision the board should make here. At this point, the town has found that short-term rentals allowed in residential districts on Nantucket, they are allowed as an accessory use. I just want to be clear that that does not apply here. That matter is currently being litigated in Ward versus Town of Nantucket, which goes to trial next week, but even if short-term rentals are allowed as an accessory use, there's absolutely no way that the short-term rental use of this property is accessory because it is the only use of the property. In conclusion, there is no defense for the commissioner's denial of enforcement here. The town already fought the battle that short-term rental use was allowed as a principal use in residential zones on the island, and the court disagreed. It is a violation of the court's decision to refuse to enforce the bylaw here. Moreover, there, the commissioner did not provide any rationale in his written decision, and if he cannot explain it, the board has no basis on which to affirm it. Moreover, affirming the decision would be giving investor groups the green light to turn homes into high-turnover rental properties and would signal to them that no zoning enforcement will be taken against them, despite the fact that the court has clearly ruled that this use is not allowed. For these reasons, we urge the board to overturn the commissioner's decision and find that the principal use of the property is for short-term rental and to require the Copley group to immediately cease and desist such use of the property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, Billy, have your hand up?
Yeah, I wanted to just make a quick statement and Ms. Gagallas alluded to this, but the town is a party to this lawsuit and Mr. Pucci was involved in that, and I, I've just had some light conversations with him about it, but he was unable to be here today.
Mm-hmm.
The action deadline on this item is April 3, so if you all want legal advice, you know, maybe most prudent to continue this matter, but you know, I'm not, I'm not telling you to do anything one way or another. I just wanted to give you the full story there.
So, personally, I would like to hear from George, and I thought, was there, I thought we were, I thought there was an agreement that might be being discussed.
No, that was, yeah, there's the potential for an agreement. I don't, I don't believe any agreement has been made, but at the same time, I have not, the board has not received any legal advice on this, and with it being currently in, you know, at the, at the court, it, I think it would be best for the court to seek the legal advice before making a determination here.
If the town is a party, I agree that we should get the town's position before we make a decision that impacts the town. Is there anyone else, is there anyone else on to speak about this in, no?
No, and I don't see.
Sorry, yes. Jeff McDermott is also here to speak. I know he is.
Is he, Jeff McDermott is an owner though, not, is he opposing counsel?
No, Mr. McDermott was the appellant, Ms. Gagallas is his attorney, and there's no one from the.
The other side?
Appellate on right now.
Okay, then I think even just hearing that, we probably should continue. I mean, because there's not an opportunity for them to respond to any of the comments being made. Lisa, you have some, you had your hand up?
Well, I just was going to make the, disclose that I have done work for one of the appellants, and I don't know that, it was years ago, but I just wanted to disclose that.
We could, if you want, after, after this meeting, I'll send you a conflict form.
Yeah.
I think that would be prudent, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. How does, how does anyone else feel about moving forward today without town, town council or, yeah, okay. So, and Mark?
Madam Chair.
Hold on one second, hold on. Mark Poor, do you have, how do you feel about that, about continuing to wait for town council opinion?
I think it's appropriate.
Okay. Okay, and, sorry. Attorney Gagallas, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Yes, I just wanted to add, I know that opposing counsel, although they did, they were provided proper notice of this hearing, is not here today, but because Mr. McDermott did wait on this hearing to speak today, I was wondering if the board would be willing to hear his public statement, although there's, obviously would be no response today, but because he has been on the hearing.
Sure, I think he's been patient, yes, and we can promote him and listen to his comments for today.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, thank you very much. Fellow board members, I appreciate you giving me a few minutes. My wife and Ash, Ashley and I have been on the island. We were renters starting in 1989, and we purchased our house in Monomoy in 2002. And as our attorney Kristin mentioned, we brought this enforcement action because, you know, Copley, Monomoy, Copley Monomoy, excuse me, continues to offer this property as a short-term rental. It has no use other than as a short-term rental. It has never, I think, as it was said, since 2015, been used as anything but a short-term rental. So then, the neighbors around the area have kind of observed that, and we had a lot of problems. There's been a lot of noise complaints, there's been garbage complaints, garbage being thrown over the fence and other neighbors' properties, et cetera. And again, I think the, the issue that we're really asserting is that this isn't an ancillary effect question. This is a primary exclusive use, zero other uses other than as a commercial property, as a short-term rental, and it just is definitely excluded under the zoning bylaws as our understanding is in, in Nantucket. So, we think this is one where, you know, we think that the, the, the facts are pretty clear, and Copley Monomoy is not even disputing that it's used as anything other than an STR 365 days a year. Thank you very much for taking that under advisement.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. So, could, could I get a motion from someone? Okay. So, March 13th?
Yes, continue to March 13th.
I'm sorry, you said their action deadline is April 1st, so we'll just.
April 3rd, so we needed to hear this today because we have to hear appeals within 65 days of the stamp by the town clerk, which was February 27th.
Okay.
But now the action deadline for the board would be April 3rd.
February 27th?
Would have been 65 days from the time they filed the application.
I understand that. All right, I got it.
Okay, so we will entertain a motion to continue to March 13th. We'll just keep an eye on that action deadline. So, motion made by Alisa.
Second.
And seconded by Lisa. Okay, so again, I'll do roll call. Alisa?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, so we will hear this again on March 13th.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. Next, we have, next, we have application 2025-10 Daniel W. West, 9 Towadi Lane. And the applicant is West. Is that, Sarah, is this yours? And Attorney Sarah Alger presenting for the applicant.
Yes, Sarah Alger for the applicant, thank you. So, this is a request for a special permit. I asked for the relief in two ways. I asked for relief under 13933A. I also asked for the reduction of setback from 10 to 5 in the Sconset, I think it's SR 10, 20?
20.
20 zone.
That's what the plan says.
Yeah, the plan is correct. Of course, I raced out of my office without any material, so I'm looking at this on my phone. But what Mr. West wants to do is he has an existing structure that was built prior to the property being in the SR 20 zone. It was conforming when it was built. It's between Towadi and Como Lane. It has a Towadi address. The way the property currently, the building currently sits on the lot, you'll see from the existing conditions plan, it's a little bit kitty-corner, so it's 5 feet to 6.9 feet on one side, on this one side, and the other is 6.2 and 8 feet on the other side. And what he wants to do is pick that building up, square it to the road, put a foundation under it, and put it back down. And when he puts it back down, he can't make it conforming, it's not going to make it more non-conforming, except on one side. It will be 6.4 feet on one side and 6.4 feet on the other side, and he's going to build two little additions onto that that will extend but not make it more non-conforming. And I think it's probably cleaner for you to do the relief to reduce the setback from 10 to 5. But it would also qualify under 13933. And I don't know if you have any questions. I gave you three plans. There's an existing conditions, a proposed conditions, and then there's one that shows the proposed kind of superimposed over the existing. Yeah. I think we have two letters in support from neighbors?
There were either two or three.
Okay.
I have them in here.
Yeah.
I, I think this seems reasonable. I mean, you are actually improving the setback on one side from 5 to 6.4, right?
Correct.
Even though the front edge is getting closer to the lot line by .5 feet or .5, yeah, .5 feet, it seems de minimis, and I can vote on it under whichever section you think is appropriate.
Okay, same. Billy?
That, I just wanted to make a comment here because staff, staff was of the opinion that if this is taken as a pre-existing non-conforming structure, the, the setback encroachments are actually being lessened. You know, they're going from 5 feet on, basically roughly 5 feet on both sides to 6.4. The only thing I want to caution the board on, if you make the finding under 13933, it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood. If it's done under 13916, it would be in, in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. That's what your findings would need to be.
I mean, I think it qualifies under both. My only, my only hesitation, which might not even be warranted under the reduction of the setback or the required setback from 10 to 5, are, are we doing that on, on both sides and is it on the entire length of it? Whereas if we're doing it under the pre-existing non-consist, pre-existing non-conforming, if there's any, they have to come back, right, if there's any future extension into or increasing of that, that setback?
Yeah, I mean, any, as.
They have to come back either way?
I think we'd have to come back either way.
I was just about to say.
Oh, because, because.
Because they're, they're within the setback.
Yes.
The setback is 10 feet. So, if they wanted to expand, increase.
Right, so there's, so are they, right, so is, it's only decreasing on 5 feet to 5 feet on one side?
On both sides.
No, no, it, it exists at 5 feet, it's going to 6.4. They're improving it on one side.
So, we're, I would.
Right, so, so why would they have to come back if we made it to 5 feet?
No, 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 if they wanted to, because we're, we're approving that they're going to be at 6.4. We're not approving that they're, they're able to go to 5.
Right, I'm not asking to go to 5. I'm just asking, you can reduce it up to 5 feet, but I'm not asking you to go the full 5. I'm asking you to reduce it to 6.4.
Right, it seems clear under 139-33 that is in.
My only, my only hesitation, and I just want to be completely honest about this, when I was doing this, the reason that I threw in the 13916 is that northeast corner is currently 6.9 feet, and when we pick it up and twist it, that 6.9 is going to go to 6.4. So, is that technically more non-conforming? I don't think so.
I was, I'm sorry to interject here. That northeast corner, well, for instance, the southeast corner is at 6.2 and the northwest corner is at 5 feet. Those would be the closest points to the sideline at the moment, so I think lessening that, it lessens the setback encroachment.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
If you agree with that, then I'm happy to be under 13933.
I think I prefer 13933.
I do too, as do I.
Okay, all right.
So, should I make that motion?
Did you have a comment, Alisa?
No.
No, okay.
Did you, Joe, sorry.
Well, I went all this stuff up 40 years ago, and there was a reason that we put my crackhead, I don't remember otherwise.
Should I send you a conflict form? I'm joking, I'm joking.
No, okay. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak to this one? I didn't see any hands on the online. No, okay. So, were you thinking to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion to approve this as submitted under 139-0.33. That is no, that is, I can't remember the wording. This could.
Not substantially.
Not substantially, more detrimental to the neighborhood.
And.
And in improving the setbacks.
And I think Nikki and I, Nikki, for the most part, did the staff report here. I think you could, she gave suggested findings and conditions.
Oh, she did, okay. So, the finding would be that the alterations and extension to the existing dwelling structure are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure, and the requested relief may be granted. Conditions we can consider are the proposed alterations and extension shall be in substantial compliance with the site plan submitted by the applicant attached, that will be attached as Exhibit A to the decision that's drafted. The project shall be completed in substantial conformity with the plans approved in connection with the Historic District Commission, COA, the number to be included in the decision. There shall be no further alterations or expansion of the structure without additional relief from this board, and any damage to Towadi Lane caused by construction activities shall be repaired and restored to its original condition or better prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And the only other thing, is this an area that we would restrict construction dates?
It's, it's not an SOH, and typically.
Oh, it's not, okay.
Yeah, it's typically in the old historic districts or where we do the moratorium over the summer for construction.
Okay. So, it would be Lisa's motion with that finding and conditions?
Yes.
Okay, Alisa seconds. Okay, so I will do roll call vote. Lisa?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, that passes.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
That was nice.
Next, we are, next, we are moving on to 25-11 Whitney H. Matthews, 43 Union Street, represented by Attorney Arthur Reed.
He's being moved over right now.
And Mr. Attorney Reed, rather, is online, and when you're moved over, you have the floor, Attorney Reed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I represent the owner of this property, Whitney Matthews, at 43 Union Street. And this is an application for a special permit to alter the pre-existing non-conforming structure on the lot by going up within the existing setback. The house at the present time. The house at the present time, and as will be at the end of the day also, because we're not changing the footprint in many respects, the northerly side yard setback is 2.13 feet. It's required to be 5 feet. And the southerly setback is 1.51 feet, as you can see on that corner, the lower part. And it's required to be 5 feet. We're going up within that footprint, within, partially within the setback area, but no portion of the footprint of the house changes. No portion gets any further into the setback than it already is. And as such, I would submit that the board should find that this would not be substantially more detrimental, in fact, don't say it would be detrimental at all to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conformity affecting this lot. And therefore, the special permit relief that's requested should be granted and fits within the provisions of the bylaw relating to the conditions for special permit relief. I would point out, by the way, I've seen that you have some correspondence on this, and I think there seems to be some misunderstanding by some of the people who have written in. This application has nothing to do with the adjacent property at 43A Union Street. And the proposals that have been going on with regard to that have nothing to do with what we're trying to do in this situation. The, this is strictly the existing main house at 43 Union Street. The only house on that lot as it now exists and has no bearing upon any of the past discussions that have taken place with regard to 43A Union Street. We have HTC approval for the project that we're before you on at the present time. And again, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for Attorney Reed at this time? Okay. Go ahead, if you can just say your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Mary Longacre. I am a member of the Towns Tree Advisory Committee. The Tree Advisory Committee is meeting next week, so it has not had a chance to discuss this. So this is my own personal thoughts, although I will say that I consulted with Dave Shampoo, the Towns Tree Warden, to make sure that he agreed with what I'm going to say here today. And I'd be happy to, I have forwarded an email to Billy with his content and that reference. When we looked at this, excuse me, when I looked at the staff report on this property, I noticed that you had a Condition Number Four, that no damage would be done to the public property that is Union Street. And I would like to suggest that you had a Condition Number Five, that no damage be done to the public property, which is the historic town tree, the elm tree that is on 43 Union Street. And I wrote a proposal for that fifth condition. If you'd like me to read it, I will, but it's also in the email forwarded to Billy. Would you like me to go ahead and read that?
You can, I don't think it was, it wasn't too long, if you want to read it.
Yes, the paragraph, yeah. So five, "Construction activities shall not cause damage to the historic town-owned elm tree at 43 Union Street. And to ensure this, no soil disturbance and no storage of material or passage of construction equipment shall be permitted on the site so that root damage or soil compaction does not occur. No removal of any limbs from the tree is permitted by anyone other than the town arborist or his designee. It shall be verified by the town arborist that there has been no damage to the town tree before a certificate of occupancy may be issued." And again, this is modeled on the Condition Number Four that was already presented by staff.
Attorney Reed, does your applicant have any issues with this proposed condition from Mary Longacre?
First of all, it's a completely separate lot in separate record ownership. Secondly, the tree is described as a town-owned tree. We believe it is a town tree. It certainly has been treated as being a town tree. Town tree doesn't necessarily mean town-owned tree. So that language is inappropriate. I mean, obviously, we have no intention of doing any damage to that tree. And it's on a separate lot, and I just don't see that it's relevant to this application in any way.
May I ask Mr. Reed any questions, Susan? Arthur, are they putting any foundation under this building?
No.
Okay.
No excavation is proposed.
Okay, so there should be no disturbance to the soil around that tree or?
Right, exactly.
If I may.
Was this, did this, did this property come before us before, where they were going to put, they wanted to put a second dwelling there?
So this property has a little bit of a lengthy history. But it was before the board originally as 43 Union, which had two structures on the lot, a garage and a dwelling. It has since been subdivided under 4181L provision of Mass General Law. And it's two separate lots. The dwelling is on 43 Union. The garage is on 43A.
So I remember the other application, when it came before, there was, when the lot was won, there was a lot of concern about this tree and what?
The request in that application was pre-existing non-conforming to raise the pre-existing non-conforming structure and build a new one. So it's.
On the smaller lot? So we.
Just in, I believe on the dwelling.
Oh, they asked to tear down that house?
I thought it was to build a, anyway, it doesn't matter.
It was on, I just can't remember. But it was a different request from what's before the board today.
So applicant's agent, in the staff report, it says, "Staff has checked with applicant's agent who confirmed that no excavation will take place." So the two lots now are in separate ownership?
Yes, separate record ownership.
Okay, so I think as far as, and what is, maybe, Ms. Longacre, you can answer this question for me. What, is there, is there, the tree is on private property, but is there some kind of delineation between, like,
Mass General Law.
How the town takes care of this tree?
Mass General Law defines a public shade tree. And the town bylaws also define a town tree. This tree is a town tree. It is protected by both Mass General Law and the towns bylaws.
Okay, so Attorney Reed, given that, could, are you open to or agreeable to a condition that takes into account the tree's status and it, or its protected status, I guess, as a town tree under the town bylaw and the Mass General Law to, you know, take precaution to the health of the tree and comply with those regulations? I mean, you have to comply with them anyway, I would imagine, but just to have it as a condition in there.
Well, the only, the only thing that we're prohibited from doing with regard to the town tree is doing anything to it. And the tree is on a different lot, so we're not going to be doing anything to it.
I think the concern that I was hearing, though, was more like if there's construction equipment that goes over where the roots are or, I mean, I hear that there's going to be no excavation, but I remember there was a lengthy discussion about this tree and where the drip line was and I don't forget what it's called, but like, you know, how the roots spread out underneath and that damage to the roots can then damage the tree and all of that. So I can imagine if there's big, heavy construction equipment in that yard, that that might damage the tree inadvertently.
Can I clarify? Is it the tree that's on Union Street or the one that's behind the house?
It's next to the sidewalk, I guess, is the best way for me.
So it's not the big one that's behind?
Yeah.
Because there's this one too. Behind where the, where the second floor is going, there's also another big tree. But it's the one that?
The one that's right on the street line?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And obviously, we're going to take every possible measure to avoid that tree. We have no desire or intention to do any harm to that tree. But it's on a separate lot, and I'm concerned about any language in the decision that would place any additional responsibility on us beyond the point of simply not disturbing the tree.
Madam Chair, who owns the lot the tree is on?
I get that the trunk of the tree is not on the lot, but I don't know, I'd have to look at the lot line. But I would assume that the canopy and the drip line and the roots probably go across the property line?
I would have to make that assumption. I'm, I don't have a map in front of me to.
Right, so I think we're not just talking about just the trunk, but it's, the concern is more.
The health of the tree.
Right, the overall health, which is impacted by the roots underneath. And I get that it's, that the trunk of it is on the separate lot, but I would, I would think that the canopy and the, and the undergrowth, or whatever you call it.
Root system.
The root system, thank you, extends to the, to the, to the lot where the construction is going to happen. So I am, I.
You know, those roots, I'm quite sure if they extend into this property, they also extend into Union Street.
I'm sure they do, yeah.
And I think it's been, it's been, it's been expressed that the roots of the tree are under Union Street. And there's a large amount of traffic driving up and down Union Street every day.
Right, but that also has like a benefit.
One-way, it's a one-way street, but there's lots of traffic on it. And therefore, you know, I think that the fact that the roots, who knows where the roots are for, for any large tree? I mean, they, they certainly do extend out, but that doesn't mean that other people are prohibited from doing anything to the property.
No, of course not.
But there may be some roots under it.
Right, and I don't, I don't think you propose to do any digging in the area where the, where the roots would be. But I think the difference is, perhaps, and I'm in no means a tree expert, but I would imagine there's a difference between, you know, when there's pavement and all of that and cars going over it versus an ex, not an excavator, because you're not excavating, but like some kind of heavy equipment sitting on a grassy area that, I don't know. I guess what we could ask, yeah, I see, I see lots of hands up. So Mary Longacre, you were starting to speak. And then is there someone who has their hand up online?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just wanted to mention Emily Molden has her hand raised.
Okay, so maybe we'll hear from, we'll hear Mary's follow-up comment, and then we'll go to Emily Molden, who certainly is more, more, better suited to speak on the topic than I am.
And hopefully Emily can add any details that I missed. But the importance of the roots that are near the surface, those are the feeder roots. They provide nutrients to the tree. Those roots don't exist under a paved surface because there's nothing there for them to intake. So the important part is the grassy area that receives moisture, that receives nutrients from the soil. That's what feeds the tree and keeps it healthy. So if there were to be disturbance of the top few inches of soil, that would definitely affect the health of the tree. That's the point that we're making.
What would, what would be typical for mitigation?
That we would not have material stores, that you would not have equipment traveling over. Equipment could be something like a forklift or a bobcat or, you know, something that would fit in that space. Not necessarily a truck or a tractor trailer or an excavator, but just something that is going to rip up the soil.
Okay.
Can I just ask another question of Arthur? It looks like you're putting a driveway in that doesn't exist currently, correct? On the site plan, it shows a drive?
I'm not sure, I don't have it right in front of me.
Well, there, there was a site plan on the drive, and I'm, and it looks like it might, that might impact the root system of the tree.
Madam Chair, point of order, I'm going to pull the site plan up. I don't believe that's depicted to be a driveway because it's only showing 6 feet wide, which wouldn't be to code. I'm going to hang on one second. I think that's just space that's measured.
Well, it says gravel. It says drive, right, on this HTC plan?
Oh, you're looking at the HTC plan, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I don't know what, you're looking at.
Because on the site plan, it's showing existing gate and arbor.
I would bet that they'll want a driveway.
Yeah.
So that will impact the tree, I think.
Could we get, have them have an arborist?
But it's right to the right of the arbor. Yeah, that's a good idea. Get a plan that shows where the tree is and the umbrella.
No, I meant tell someone to look over the construction methods. You know, old arborist graduate, and have that person approve it.
Well, maybe Emily can help us with that.
We don't have.
We do have a town arborist who works.
To try and think we know what we're doing.
Dave Shampoo is the tree, the town arborist. I think he'd be the one to ask how a parking area, which looks like this is what it is, a parking spot, off-street parking, impacts the root system. And, and usually, the root system is the size of the canopy above it, like it's a reflection.
We'll just have, have him approve the construction methodology near the tree.
For the driveway. I mean, I don't have any issue with the expansion of the structure.
No, me neither.
I mean, but I do, you know, think that.
That's a really good point.
The health of the tree is important, and we should, you know, get somebody who knows what they're doing.
All right, let's, let's, let's hear from Emily Molden, and then, and then we'll continue conversation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Great, this is Emily Molden. And for full disclosure, I'm also a member of the Towns Tree Advisory Committee, but I'm speaking on behalf of the Nantucket Land and Water Council today. I largely wanted to echo the comments and sentiments that Mary has made already. And I appreciate the board's discussion about this. I recognize that the tree is technically on a different property. As a town tree, I believe the board certainly has the jurisdiction and discretion to permit, condition a project in order to help protect the town tree. I know that it has happened in other circumstances where projects have been conditioned to help protect a tree that's on the adjacent, in the adjacent roadway layout. That has happened in the past. And I think the fact that there is already a condition to prevent any damage to Union Street, which clearly is also off, off-site, that it's appropriate to incorporate a condition very similar to what Mary had suggested. I, my understanding is that Dave Shampoo, who is the town tree warden, did review the language that Mary is proposing. I think if the board was interested in hearing directly from the Towns Tree Warden on this, that would be very appropriate, since he's our official town tree expert. And as Mary mentioned, I believe the Tree Advisory Committee is meeting next week. And I think that if he, if Dave had an opportunity to weigh in, that would make a lot of sense as far as just helping to craft a condition that, again, it doesn't seem as though it's being proposed, other than, than maybe the driveway, if that's a part of it, is likely to damage the tree. But I think that it's certainly incumbent on the board and would be very much appreciated if there was a condition that added that element to this permit. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Woman at the microphone, if you want, just, I'm sorry, Woman at the microphone, if you want, just, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, if you want to-
I'm Liz Coffin.
If you just, yeah, say your name and you can present here.
Oh, I'm Liz Coffin. I live at 47 Union Street, and I wanted to come and talk to you about the neighborhood. And I submitted some photographs as well, so that you could have some visuals here, because I am completely, oh, here's a, here's a good visual. This is the little scrap of lawn, which is where the feeder roots all are. On the, the blue tarp covers the garage, and the building at the left is the primary dwelling. There is a brick path, and as far as I can tell, somewhere along that brick path is the subdivision.
I think you're right.
But I just want, this, oh, by the way, this is from, the grade is changing, and so this is above, looking over down. This is on the Zaloom property. I would, I paid special attention not to walk on Mr. Whitney's, Matthews' property. I did not want to. So, all of the things I'm going to tell you are about walking around the property and seeing it from the outside in. But because of the change of grade, because of where it's located, and because of the history of the building and the land, even a, there are lots of things that I can attempt to bring before you that mean that I feel that the currently proposed expansion is going to substantially be detrimental. In other words, it will exacerbate all, the already existing non-conformities. This is below the embankment, and the town tree there is on the land where it meets the floodplain of Union Street. It's two feet above Union Street, so the grade is already changing. And by the time you look at it from this point, there's a rise of maybe four feet. This house was there since 1848, and it's jammed into the embankment. The embankment terracing starts right at the edge of the patio. Now, the patio has a big tree in it, which is the maple tree. And as far as I can tell, any building that was going to happen, that maple tree is gone. It can't, you can't subsist together, because the expansion is going to be a second floor right on top. Now, the, part of the problem for me is that I don't believe that the measurements that are before you are correct. And that's due to my experience, because I lived below the embankment as well, and I've already been, I'm a, I call myself a case-hardened veteran of land court. And it has to do with these measurements done in the 19th century. They're not correct. And so, the purportedly, this big house, it's not that big, it's 910 square feet, that's the only true measurement that I'd like to acknowledge. I say that the surrounding territory, which is claimed to be something else, doesn't exist. The ground cover that they want, they say, is that it's 52% of the lot. Now, I think that that house covers 85% of the lot. This is a really substantial difference between the application and what I see on the ground. And adding, and this becomes a question of density, because adding that second floor will change the mass and volume. Now, this isn't just, and the mass and volume is going to change the airflow and the light. And since it's jammed up against the embankment, all of the houses around it are suffocating it for air to begin with. It doesn't have much, there's not much going, able to go around. Anyway, I couldn't find the 800 square feet. I don't understand where the dumpster is going to go. I don't understand where the storage of materials are going to go. I don't understand where the, any of the activity necessary for building such an extension will happen. And I also want to bring in front of you the ideas of, that this is the main artery into town. The disruption to the town and the disruption to the neighborhood is massive, because they're good, everybody on Mulberry Street's going to be locked in, because they're going to close off the base of Union Street. And no car can get in or out without a blocking access to the town. In other words, the, your local year-round residents will not be able to do anything while the construction is going on. This is a significant disruption. Just want, I guess, I will, I will just reiterate that the expansion of the building, this building is already tight into it, into this, into the land, that this expansion of this building upwards and will substantially be a detriment to the neighborhood. And the trees do have to have some kind of conditional support from you. The town tree, but, you know, I don't understand how they can do, you can't, you can't protect the maple tree.
May I ask you a question?
Thank you.
Is the maple tree the one that's behind the house?
Yes.
Okay.
It's right, when you look at this land from a, from the Zaloom property, the neighbor, the abutting neighbor, this patio area looks like a sort of well, because it drops down, because that was where the land was cut out of the embankment, and that's where the maple tree exists.
Okay, in that triangular area?
In that triangular area, right. And I just want to reiterate, there's not 800 square feet of surrounding land.
Okay. Well, given, given the comments from the community and from, as, as citizens and as Land and Water Council, and I think it may make sense for us to continue this, to give the Tree Advisory Committee a chance to meet and submit to us, I guess, a condition that they would like, or just their opinion in general, and the town arborist as well.
Yeah, I'd like to understand if they have concerns with, is it, is it the parking? Will, will the moving of the stairs make a difference? Like what-
Yeah.
What do they see as, and sort of the status of the maple tree as well?
Yeah, and I'd, I'd like, so, this, the, and any mitigation that they can suggest. The other condition I saw, I didn't see on this, that we would want to include, I believe, and Mrs. Coffin, thank you for your comments that brought it to my mind, with Union Street and Mulberry being, you know, an active street to get down there, we want to add the, no, no, no construction and no parking on Mulberry or Union.
At any time. Yeah, I am sort of curious, too, from the applicant, you know, if these are not in common ownership, will there be a fence put up between the properties? Is there going to be-
He said they weren't in common record ownership.
Yeah, record ownership, not, yeah, I picked up on that, too. I don't think it's-
They're common control, though.
The 43A LLC, 43-
Yeah, they have very different names, like ones-
Yes, yes, sir.
Could you ask Mr. Freed if the ownership, what's the relationship? My belief is that's the same beneficial ownership, that they're not too separate. There'd be legal differentials, but I think it's the same beneficial ownership.
Yeah, I asked that earlier, too, who owns the smaller lot that the tree is actually on?
Attorney Reed, could you address these questions from the public and from the Board members?
Yeah, under the Nantucket zoning bylaw, record ownership is what counts. The concept of common control was removed by an amendment to the zoning bylaw several years ago, so the adjacent lot stands in the record ownership of Stephen Russo trustee. This lot stands in the name of Whitney Matthews.
Is there any relation to the two people that own it, own the two separate lots?
There, there, there is a relationship between the beneficial owners, yes.
There is?
Yes.
So, it's likely that they will be giving permission, the small lot that has the tree on it will say, "Yeah, go ahead, you can stockpile the lumber and put a bobcat and all that, and a trailer on my lot for your use." It's, it's likely.
Yeah.
It's an assumption.
Well, unless we can-
Well, you can make whatever assumption you want, I suppose. I don't think that that's necessarily correct.
They have to protect the tree.
Madam Chair, I have a separate question.
Sure.
Billy, is it possible to-
Hold on, and then unfortunately, we have to wrap up, because it is 401.
Billy, can you pull up page 35, the picture of the profile of the back of the house and the tree behind the house? Is, is that also considered a town tree?
That was my question, that's the maple.
No.
It's not considered a town tree. But if we look at our page 35, the profile, which shows the one-story-
Is it, should I go up?
Uh, go down, please. I think it's right, no, yeah, right there. You got it.
Right there, yeah.
Above 35. If you look at that tree behind the house and where the addition that would be, that is, it's been HTC approved, I think, right?
Yeah.
To go up, it looks like they've been trimming that tree, the owner of that tree or someone has been trimming it, so it goes straight up. And from the looks of the profile of what they want to do for an addition, it looks like they could live in harmony together, an addition going up and the shape of that tree. But I am a huge advocate for protecting trees, but I just want to point out that I don't think constructing a second story or half a story above that is going to hurt that tree.
And-
Just from my guesstimation.
No, I agree with you, but there's no way that we can condition it, if it's not a town tree, for them to keep that tree.
Right, but it's, I, I bet you they enjoy that tree, too, so they're not going to want to, you know, remove it, but-
I wouldn't bet on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Any, but, but-
Given the size of that site.
But that's not, but that's, again, that's, that's not our purview. So, I think there's more information to be gathered here. Did you have something else to add, Ms. Longacre?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Just to note that the 43 Union is on the agenda for the Tree Advisory Committee next week.
Great, okay. Well, then, for, then I think that gives us even more reason to continue this until March 13th. Would someone make that motion?
I will. I'll motion to continue until our next meeting.
Second.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote, then. Alisa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, so that motion carries. So, we have, the Board has a meeting next-
Wednesday.
Wednesday, and that will be most likely our final public hearing for Surfside Crossing. So, to all our fans out there, if you have anything else you want to add to the public record? Wednesday's the day to do it.
There's an, there's an opening for an alternate.
Oh, yeah.
So, one of those people who likes to come in and complain and yell at us-
Or support.
Or support, that could happen.
Submit your papers.
February 19th at 1:00 PM, remember?
Yeah, so February 19th, 1:00 PM is our next meeting, then the next regular meeting is March 13th. Can I take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So, John makes motion, Alisa seconds, I will do roll call vote again. John?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Did we miss anything? No. Okay, good. Okay, thank you, everybody. [inaudible] Joe, thank you for keeping us moving along. I appreciate it.